I'm Michelle Prior, joined by Vice Chair Andrew Brady, members of the [inaudible 00:00:29].
I'm Michelle Prior, joined by Vice Chair and Chief of Hearing, Members Phil Donahue, Cars Biony, Plank, and Court, and our African Town Manager, Steve William. Tonight, we're going to go through the agenda with Committee of Litigation. If our public hearing were weighed on utility, I can see them walking in, yes, we make the public hearing that's scheduled for 7:45, it will start when we have the right people in the room. So, we're going to move through the agenda with acceptance of donations and the Town Managers' report, and depending on if we're ready for the public hearing or not, then I would like to take up committee and commission appointments, and then we'll get to public comment, I think, after the public hearing is concluded. So, let's see how we do, but if we want to start with acceptance of donations, and then the Town Managers' report. What's that?
Move that we accept with gratitude donations of $906 from Winchester residents to the Recreation Department Neighbors Helping Neighbors Fund.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And that's a great fund, if people want to donate to it, it certainly helps our families' access recreation program, so it's a great fund, and I'm happy to see Nick got some donations last quarter, so thanks for letting us know about that. Now, I'll turn it over to Steve for the Town Managers' report.
The first item on staff appointments, I'm pleased to appoint Nicholas Caccio from Winchester as a part-time civilian dispatcher, and I would respectfully request that the Select Board vote to waive the normal 15-day appointment period.
Move that we waive the 15-day appointment period to appoint Nicholas Caccio to the part-time civilian dispatcher.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Also, committee and commission appointments to the Conservation Commission, reappoint Tom Boulay, term to expire March 31, 2028, and appoint Alexander Lee, term to expire March 31, 2028.
All right, so you made those appointments, okay? Yep.
General topics, I've got a couple for you. The first one, I am aware, we've been made aware of some questions and comments relative to the parking lot between this building and the library, and how it relates to ramps. The parking lot project was a project to make it ADA compliant, which has been completed. As part of the renovation, there was an existing ramp near the door that was removed and not replaced based upon inadequate elevations that could comply and keep it compliant with the ADA program. The library has installed a temporary metal ramp that's out there at their expense, that presents its own challenges as we approach the winter in terms of potential snow and ice issues, or damage from plows, or from, indeed, from some of the drivers backing up from the handicap ramps that are available. The question has been raised about, well, can't we just add another ramp? These are questions that I need to kind of resolve over the next week or two, in terms of the more information, but at this point, I just want to acknowledge, yes, we hear some comments and concerns, we will take it some time to kind of dig into that and come back to you with an update as to where we are, but I just wanted to get that out in the open, that, yes, we're aware of it, and we will take a look at it as the lot is complete, but there are some questions about how it has come out, so just want to give you that update. Over on the public works side, DPW is finishing up their milling of the final streets of this year's program, Wendell Street, Arisha Lane, Vincent Circle, Country Lane, and Worthing Road, structure repair and paving in these locations will be in the next several, couple of weeks, and the next steps, side rock repair will be finishing up for the season in the coming week, and the water main pilot program is moving forward with infrastructure to be installed soon. Just a reminder that Wednesday night in this room, we will have the Town Managers' Town Meeting warrant hearing, will begin in person at 6:00 PM, and it'll be broadcast on WinCam, so we'll have folks who like to come and walk through the warrant and explain everything that's coming up over the next three or four nights of town meeting in a couple of weeks, we'll have that, actually, it starts next week. We've got a couple of updates from the Council on Aging, they've received an $8,500 grant from Winchester Mount Vernon House to enhance caregivers' supports and resources, in recognition of National Caregivers Month, Speaker Katie Wadlin will present at the Jenks in November, so there's a couple of good programs going on there, there'll be a financial workshop for Winchester residents on November 4th with the Assessors' Office over at the Council, with the Council on Aging, to discuss tax abatements and deferrals, and there's also an age-friendly Winchester community public meeting scheduled for December 5th regarding findings from survey and presentation to state of the town to acquire further feedback from residents, so that's my brief report for this evening.
Great. And a reminder for everybody, town meeting starts on Monday, November 3rd, Select Board will meet before town meeting in the Principal's Office at Winchester High School, we won't be on camera, but the door will be open. And Patty, the last thing I wanted to note was, that sidewalk closure might be next week as well, over on Main Street?
At 585 Main.
585 Main, so we voted a grant of location, that's right at the Rotary, near the Mediterranean Grill, so we didn't vote it tonight, we will vote it Monday, but just for residents to be aware, starting, I think it's going to go Tuesday to Friday, or probably a three-day closure, Tuesday to Thursday, there will be, you know, police coverage and obviously safe, you know, routes for pedestrians, but there'll be, the sidewalk will be torn up at 535 Main?
Yes, 585.
585 Main.
It's where it used to be, the old gas station.
Yes, so we're not going to vote that tonight, but for the public, so that, you know, election day and beyond, you'll see that, and just for a few days while they get some utilities connected, and there's work being done on that site. Okay, so, I still don't see Eversource, and we're still not there.
He is here.
Matt is here? Is Jackie here?
Matt's here.
Okay, that's fine. So why don't we invite up our appointments tonight? We'll start with the Council on Aging, and if we can invite Alan McDonald and Jing Zhang, if you want to come up together and take a seat. And for anyone here for public comment, I will come back to that after the public hearing, I promise. So, good evening, Ms. Zhang and Mr. McDonald, we have your application, we've read your application, but we do like to invite folks to come in, and we'll, ladies first, we'll start with you, Jing, but a bit about who you are, and why you've applied, and why you wish to be on the Council on Aging's board, and then we'll ask the same question of.
Absolutely, my name is Jing, I've been a resident in Winchester for about 17 years, during these 17 years is all wonderful experience, and I love this community, and I would like to do, to do my part now, to contribute in any way or shape, and my main focus on council on aging is to bring the Chinese-speaking community, a community into the fabric of this lovely community, yeah, that's my goal.
Nice.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And members of the board, Alan McDonald is my name, and many, many years on Bacon Street in Winchester, now up in the Ledges, and active in the community prior to the Town Day days, I was on the roof there, Alan Knight, and then others got going for Town Day back in the eighties, was it the eighties, seventies, excuse me, it was 1974, I think, or so, but, and then had the chance to very proudly serve here on this board, and stay involved in the community in a number of different committees over the years, and in our modern age, that the Council on Aging has a certain ring to it that I think is appropriate, and I would like to continue involvement a little bit, and this would be an opportunity to do so, and if it's the role of the board, I would love the opportunity.
Great. We're grateful that you both applied, does anybody have any questions? Okay, we thank you for your interest, and we will take motions individually, and we'll get those appointments done.
Move that we appoint Alan McDonald to the Council on Aging for the term to expire March 31, 2026.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move that we appoint Jing Zhang to the Council on Aging for the term to expire March 31, 2027.
A second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thanks for the flexibility.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
I'll see you at the Jenks one of these days, I think.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, and is Caroline Woodward in the room? Ah, come on up. If you would.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi.
So if you could introduce yourself, and we, as I say, we do have your application, so why you'd like to serve on the Cemetery Committee, and anything else you'd like to say about yourself or your service in town?
Okay, my name's Caroline Woodward, I live on the corner of Woodside and Chesterford Road East, so I live on the western corner of the Wildwood Cemetery, and I grew up in the house, I was away for 25 years, but now I'm back, so I have a long personal history with the cemetery, and spending a lot of time there. I view it as a really valuable resource, both ecologically and culturally, for the town, and I, I'm very interested in the history of the landscape architecture design of the place, and it's kind of serves as an unofficial arboretum, I'm interested in all the wildlife aspects of it, and the tree management, and I saw there was an open seat, so I just thought I'd raise my hand and chip in, and help with the management of the place if I can.
Great. Okay, thank you for applying, anybody have any questions for Ms. Woodward?
Would you ever consider resurrecting T-TAC?
I don't think that's within my power to do so.
That's within your power to do.
Would you be interested in resurrecting T-TAC?
Oh, wow, I wasn't expecting that question. I think T-TAC.
You got a rule that went out of order.
What does that have to do with the cemetery?
It's on her application.
It's true, I did serve, I was one of the.
Founding members.
Founding members of T-TAC, rest in peace, I thought the resurrection lead on the cemetery was going to be a different question.
It's a theme, I'm glad that you're on it with me, yeah.
I don't know that you have that power either, by the way, so let us know if you do, we'd be impressed.
I mean, I think that the T-TAC was, I enjoyed being on the board and exchanging ideas with people, and I thought a lot of the ideas were great, I had left by the time it disbanded, so I don't really have much knowledge of what happened there at the end, but we did get, I feel like we got some, I think the only policy that we got done while we were there, as we were a new committee, and it was difficult to get things started, but we did get a strapping policy on the board, which I see has been implemented across the town, and I think it's been really helpful in, you know, slowing down general speeds in the town, my personal observation is that people do seem to be driving a little bit slower, and I think that's good for everybody.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Delighted to hear you view it as a garden cemetery, and want to see it as an arboretum.
Indeed.
The Chair of the Conservation Commission, the Conservation Administrator, the Head of DPW, among others, are all in the room.
Yes.
So please, or the head of our fast forest, so a lot of tree advocates in the room, please grab them before you leave, and, you know, they're all here, grab them all you can.
Great, yep.
It's not wrong. Okay, any other questions or comments?
The only thing I'll say, thank you for applying and your willingness to serve, again, another committee for the town, and I know you've been involved with kind of opening up access to the cemetery as well.
Yes.
For people that want to walk through, I mean, it is a beautiful resource, and one thing that I am always wondering is, I don't know why we still have barbed wire fencing around, and it's always my question of like, you know, are we trying to keep people in or out, right, so.
I actually know why we have the barbed wire fencing.
Yes, yes, but I mean, is it something that you think that we need to maintain, or you think it's something that's?
My personal opinion is that it should be removed.
Yes, okay.
It was installed in the 1930s to prevent grave robbing.
Yep.
Which is not really an issue anymore, and.
I haven't seen any of that, anyway.
I haven't seen any of that, and I know that the Town Meeting voted more than a decade ago that the cemetery should be open to the public 24 hours a day, so if that is the case, then why do we have razor wire fencing in place? I think it's, I do think it should be removed, yes.
And it's otherwise open in different areas, right?
Correct, yeah, there's just these small segments of the razor wire that just, there hasn't been incentive or money, I guess, to remove it so far, but, you know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I learned a few things. Move that we appoint Caroline Woodward to the Wildwood Cemetery Advisory Committee for the term to expire May 31, 2028.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you for serving, thanks for applying.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So if we could have, so again, I'm going to come back to public comment, but we will open up the public hearing for Eversource, the grant of location on Main Street, and this is 33 feet of conduit within the right-of-way in Gin Road, if anyone is here for the public hearing, I'll open it up for comments after we hear from Town Engineer and Utility, so just know that I'll call on you in a minute. We do have the application, as usual, nice to see you again, Jackie.
Good to see you.
And Matt, if you want to start with the project, or where it's going, from which side of the road, to what, any disruptions, or any other impacts on neighbors?
Yeah, this is just a typical grant of location to install underground conduit to serve a house that's currently being renovated at 29 Gin Road, they do have to go across the street because the pole's on the other side of the street, but other than that, it's a pretty typical situation, there are no special circumstances or conditions, other than typical restoration.
Okay. And when do you hope to do this work?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible, okay, so the homeowner's ready for you, and ready for this, okay? Does anybody from the public have any comments that want to be heard on this public hearing, on this grant of location? If you do, raise your hand, or come on up. All right, then I, any questions for Matt or for Jackie? Okay, and I'll close the public hearing, and we'll take a debate, and we'll take a You can make the motion, and then we'll see if there's any more discussion.
Move that we approve the Eversource grant of location to install approximately 33 feet of conduit within the public right-of-way in Gin Road to provide electric service to 29 Gin Road.
Any additional discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
Thank you.
Jackie, thanks, Matt.
Have a nice night.
Thank you. Okay. So next, we'll move to public comment, if anyone is here for public comment, if you'd like to raise your hand, so I can have a sense, a couple, okay, come on up, if you'd like to come up to the table.
Hello.
If you could state your name for the record, and where you live, and I'll start with you.
My name is Dorothy Feldman, I've lived at Nine Polk Road for about 35 years.
Okay, and you can give your comment, we're limited to three minutes.
I'm here to speak about the Article 35, that's up for Town Meeting next week, I'm a community member, and I've been interested in the non-development of the parcel of land, which is owned by the Shannon family, which is called the Forest Ridge property, there's some politicking that's going on about how this is going to be pursued, I've spoken with two of the people on this board, I've spoken with some of my neighbors, I've had communication with some other neighbors, and I'm interested in having this land conserved, I'm interested in this land not being overdeveloped, and I'm aware that there is some potential that it could possibly be developed, I would like to work with this board, with this community, with this town, to get the best possible solution to putting this property into a conservation trust. I'm not exactly sure about what the processes were that brought this article to Town Meeting, I've heard that there's some problems with it, I'm not into the politics of how town government works, or how this could be remedied, I'm interested in working with my neighbors, with this board, with this community, to get this property into conservation, and I'm not sure if Article 35 is the way to do it, I'm ignorant as to what can be done to adjust it before it goes to Town Meeting, if that's even possible, I'd like to ask this board to work together later in tonight's session, to find a unanimous solution that you can present to the town, that the town can know that you're all supportive, and that hopefully you work with the Conservation Commission in order to find a solution that makes a feasible offer to the owners, that the owners would find satisfactory, that you could present to the community, that Town Meeting would accept, that the town would provide the funds for it, and that the land could have probably the highest and the best use, which is community access conservation. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you, I'm Tracy Olson, 234 Forest Street, I am also the Chair of the Conservation Commission. I had recently submitted a letter to the Select Board asking for support for putting, acquiring the land at Forest Ridge, and putting it into conservation. The primary goals for this would be to provide public. The primary goals for this would be to provide public health and wellness, an area to have a natural retreat for hiking, bird watching, dog walking, and recreational access and community connection through the fells and for environmental protection and resource management. And I received a floristic inventory just today by a botanist who looked over the site and I wanted to tell you about it because I was a little surprised at what he found there. So the site consists of primarily of two forested upland white pine oak knolls on the either, on either side of a disturbed road, access road, which was actually used in the construction of Route 93 in the 1950s, where some construction debris and rocks dumped there. There's also a wetlands of deep emergent cattail marsh on the southern end, which is bordered by a narrow strip of red maple swamp. As noted by the botanist, the natural habitats are notable for having very few non-invasive plants despite their close presence to the neighborhood and the disturbed roadway. A floristic quality assessment revealed the site as being high-quality environment with an index number of 23. The range for high-quality habitat is 20 to 35. Most of the forested properties around here only have a habitat value of 10 to 15. So this kind of takes all of our pollinator gardens and everything that we're putting in and multiplies it by orders of magnitude. So it's kind of like having the heaviest heavyweight on your team. We, the opportunity for recreation that's caused by this unique environment is very high because there's, you get more flora and fauna when you have a combination of wetlands and upland species. It's truly a beautiful place to go and walk and enjoy the environment. I think it could have great educational opportunities because the marsh there is truly spectacular. The other thing I wanted to mention is that by leaving this in private hands, we deprive the residents of the opportunity to take advantage of this property. And we, as well as do some remediation on the property in terms of further enhancing the habitat value. Also, if the property would be developed, there would be significant habitat loss. And we are, in Winchester, I'm very proud of the fact that we have a real concern for habitat, the environment, its benefit to humans and animals and plants. And I would like to see that continue.
Thank you. Do you plan on being here for later this evening for the conversation on Forest Ridge? Because otherwise I have a question for you about forest stewards.
I do.
Okay. I can ask it at that time.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. No one else here for public comment? Okay.
Absolutely.
Wait. Oh. Okay.
Can we leave?
Yeah, you sure can. Thank you. Thank you for coming. No, unless you, unless you want to chime in with whatever this gentleman's going to say, so.
Good evening.
I never know what's coming.
Yeah, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I've lived on Forest Circle for 40 years. My wife has lived there her entire life. She's spent, been around, three Forest Circle. She moved across street to 211 Forest Street, which is right on the circle, and then 10 Forest Circle. We've seen people come in here, try to develop the property, and they've all failed. The reason, I think the main reason they failed is the steepness of getting up there. You would actually have to build a big winding road, I believe, to get up there, unless you found perhaps a house on Bellevue or possibly on Polk Road. Other than that, there's really not a lot of places to get in there. And I had to build a French drain, one for one side. That was after they did blasting to build three hoses on Forest Circle. I was getting inundated with water. And then a little while later, I had to do the, my whole, whole French drain. Two sump pumps, it seems to have alleviated the problem, but I fear what any blasting would do to my house and my neighbors. We all have water problems there. That's my biggest concern. I can see maybe you could, small development, but you know, developers don't want to come in for a small thing. They want to come in for something big. And I just don't think it's feasible. I really don't. The property is not meant to be habitated by humans. Let the animals run in there. I've seen, we've had deer, fox, turkeys. We have many different species up there, living up there. And it butts the fells. It would be a great addition to the fells. And thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me.
I need your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Paul White, 10 Forest Circle.
I'm Julie Rehman-Schneider. I'm at 21 Forest Circle and I sent a letter to the board members. And my house is one of the ones that the blasting occurred, that we flooded the neighborhood. We weren't there yet, but it is, the site is, there's ledge knolls and Tracy spoke about the fauna. The hydrology is that there are perched wetlands, so there's wetlands at the top of the site. And you know, our fear in the previous developments, that they all had large retaining walls and a lot of blasting that had to be done to, just to construct an access road and the buildings that they were proposing. So you know, the fear of the neighborhood is that if they do blasting for construction that it will create fissures and there might be some, some of the water might come down towards Forest Circle. So, I mean, it's, the neighborhood is overwhelmingly in support of having it turned into conservation land. So that's all. You've read the letter, so.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
I'm coming to support my colleagues and neighbors.
You were all so shy when I asked you had public comment. No, but I appreciate your boldness.
I promised my wife I would sit on my hand, so.
If she's watching right now.
I hope she's not watching.
I don't know. If you could, your name? Yes, thank you.
My name is Dennis Colette. I live at 12 Polk Road. I've been a resident of Winchester since 1989, at our current residence since 1999. We're at a unique point in time where we have an opportunity to protect land, to create open space, especially when you look at the density that's happening, the increased density of Winchester. You know, every buildable lot that is coming forth, 3, 4, 5,000 square foot homes are being built. This has come, and I'm assuming the board is familiar and has researched the history, but this dates back to 2000. I think the initial project build was in 2006, 2007. Nine years ago, the town was heavily involved with engaging an outside attorney, Robowski. And I'm not sure if you've seen his letter, but if you could pass it down to Michelle for the record, that would be great. That his work expands on why this is not an ideal, developable property. You've heard from our neighbors around issues of water. They didn't mention the traffic surveys that were done. The concerns around non-conforming streets of Forest Circle's a non-conforming street, which would make it additionally difficult to create an access point. I am concerned that Article 35 is vague, but I still want to encourage all of you to seriously consider preserving this land on the east side of town. We've done some work on the west side of town. It'd be great to invest on the east side of town. Thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Colette a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Colette, thank you for speaking. And I know that we've heard a little bit recently about kind of the vagueness of the warrant article language. And sometimes I think we maybe overlawyer things a little bit with our, with our language and something that gives us a lot of flexibility. What would make you and maybe the neighborhood feel more comfortable as far as an amendment or something in Article 35? I know I'm putting you on the spot, but you can speak generally.
Yeah, I would welcome that. So years ago, I was a town meeting member for roughly 10 years. And I believe at the time legally, you can make edits to warrant articles, provided that there's public notification, appropriate public notification of the change. I would have it be more specific than, and I speak for myself, not for my neighbors, but I would want it to be more specific for designated use of conservation versus just generic municipal use. The other thing that I'd like to encourage is to try and increase the communication. So since we met last week with Mike and the neighborhood, I've learned that there was an initial discussion by this board of maybe creating affordable housing and conservation. We only found out at this meeting that the Shannons were looking for an offer from the town to try and release themselves from the ownership. I think the community should be brought in much sooner and we should have been aware of that. I've had neighbors who've suggested, couldn't there be a public-private type partnership where neighbors would actually fund the purchase of a portion of the land to help with the concern of the investment on the town side? So I would appreciate it. I'm sure my neighbors would appreciate, you know, as things develop, that we're kept abreast and have an opportunity to weigh in, understanding that the decision is still yours, but would like to have a say in the process.
Are there any questions? Questions, sir?
Can I, just, Anthony probably has, it sounds like you have a question. I have questions. How do we want to conduct this conversation? Because it's a noticed item, number six.
It is.
We're still at number two. We just haven't started number two. We have a number of people here who want to speak on this with us, but we're not structured-
I wasn't aware that we had this many people here to speak with us. So we can move on, or if you don't leave, we can ask the questions when we take it up under public. Because I was going to move to the WCCP item.
Well, because we're not structured in this format to do a roundtable, which is something you could, you have to notice that. It sounds like that's actually like the combined select board resident dialogue that people are looking for. Anthony and I, I'm sure, can ask questions. Mike may have questions. Bill may have questions. But then when we get to it on the agenda, only we can talk. So this is like a, we're sort of constrained by our format here. So I just ask you as our Chair, how you would like to conduct the meeting, so.
If people had questions, I can pause now if you want to take a seat and step back. But we do have some other business to get through this evening. But I don't know, how many questions do you, how many, how many questions do you have?
I just had a follow-up question on, it sounds like last week's meeting was the initial outreach and awareness for the neighbors. And I was just curious if that was the first that this had come to you or if anything had been shared earlier.
So from my experience, that was the first for me. Is that the same for you as well?
Yes.
I heard it was going to be on the warrant.
Yeah.
From somebody, from-
It came in the mail.
It's a, yeah, certainly.
You mentioned the affordable scope, so that, you only heard about it a week ago. I believe that affordable scope was removed a few weeks ago. But you're saying you sort of heard about that more recently?
Yes. So I learned from a concerned neighbor that there had been a discussion by this board about potential for affordable housing in that location.
That was part of the initial proposal, yes.
Yeah.
To do, not, not-
And it was in the public WCCP proposal as well.
It was in the public, exactly. CCP Chair's here. There's a couple of units on Forest Circle itself, is what you're referring to. It wasn't a large number of units.
The person didn't clarify, other than that it was part of the discussion.
Right. I just want to be, it sounds like there may be some sense that the Select Board is trying to develop this land into something that may rhyme with the 2016 Krebs proposal. That has never been at all a policy initiative of this board. Not any time in the last, probably ever, but certainly not since I've- Bluntly, I think it was the idea of-
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Presetta, what is it?
I have a point in order. I'm not sure if this is a public hearing or-
No, we're not having a public hearing and I think we're done with public comment.
Like I said, there were three projects developed there over the years in the, around 2006. There was one to build a cul-de-sac with, and off cul-de-sac for 17 homes. That was rejected because you can't have a cul-de-sac coming off a cul-de-sac. Then they came back with 10 and it's still got rejected. So then we came in nine years ago with 296 units. That's ridiculous.
Yep. And this letter is available, if board members want it, we can get it PDF. But the letter from Mike Robowski, it's all available on our planning board, from our planning board, pretty much, so. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
So you said you mentioned the CCP proposal. Is there, is that, is there a way that they could view that?
The CCP? Come on up. We're taking up WCCP now. So come on up. Nick, come on up.
Sorry, I did not answer the question either. Hi, everybody.
Introduce yourself, Christine.
Hi, Christina Marshall, Chair of the WCCP.
Nick Ciotrovi, Recreation Director.
So now, go ahead and ask your question.
Christina, is there a way that the neighbors can access the WCCP proposal that was put in for Forest Circle, Forest Ridge?
Is that proposed? Is there not publicly available on our website? But it would be subject to a public records request and we can very easily make it available. I would probably defer to you as if, to the extent we need to redact anything from that at this point, I'm not sure.
I don't think there would need to be anything redacted at this point. I think that our communications with WCCP were originally in executive session and then over the several meetings that we had there were in public session. So I think the application is, should be, should be available.
Yeah. Okay. So if someone wants to be point for the neighborhood, if they wish to see it, what was originally had some modest housing and then now it does not, we can just ask someone to work with Mike and I and get it to some of the interested neighbors, but that is public document.
Happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you. So good evening and thanks for coming in tonight. We'd asked Christina to come in and just go over the WCCP projects. We have Nick here to talk a bit about the pickleball court, because that's also, it's one of the motions. There's something that had come up before for this board. So I was going to take a pickleball last, if that's okay, Nick? If you want to just sit through? And Christina, if you could just take us through the WCCP projects, the motions that you have, then we'll talk pickleball. Then I want to talk about the personnel article, so.
Yes. Thank you. Happy to do that. So I'm happy to report that we're making good progress on our presentation for town meeting. So I get to crib from that for this presentation tonight. So I will not spend a lot of time with you all on the process. I think you were all pretty aware of it as we were going through our initial process this summer, but just as a very brief overview, we kind of piloted an initial WCCP application round for the first year, mostly to test out how our process would work and make sure that we had the system down, but also to try to get some funding out into the town so that we can start seeing some development from all of this money. So at a high level, the funds available to us for this year are $1.6 million. We are bringing $1,036,000 for town meeting approval. And I will go through what makes up that amount. So the first project is for Wedge Pond aeration. This is proposed by the Conservation Commission and Friends of Wedge Pond. It was $59,000. And this is for fixing kind of the water quality of Wedge Pond and installing an aeration system that will minimize and eliminate algae, algal blooms, and support the ecosystem, including fish in the project. So as with all of the projects, we felt like this one was well-supported. We understood the scope of the budget. The timing was well within the next year to complete this and we felt like it would have an immediate and beneficial impact on the pond and the associated areas. I can rip through all of these or I can just stop and ask for questions after each project. How would you prefer that I proceed?
How do people want to proceed?
We'll move to a project at a time. We'll move project at a time.
If we jump in, if we have questions? Please. I don't have them on everything.
Just so people track that one, it came from the Conservation Commission. I think it really helps improve the Wedge Pond asset into the, you know, shore. So I think it's a, you know, I had learned about that one in the context of Borgard, and I think it's a really great project.
Who's the assumed, this is going to have a question for all of them. Who's the assumed kind of project manager lead entity on this Wedge Pond project? Like, who's the, who's the point person?
That is a great question, and that will require me to just open up one other screen. So just give me a minute. But the Conservation Commission.
Implementation. All my questions are implementation specific.
Engineering will probably have to do the work, right?
Yeah, this is a town, the Conservation Commission came to us with this project. So it'd be run internally.
Okay.
Any other questions on?
Steve might have answered someone, too, who knows? And this, once it's in, it's in? It's installation of a submerged system?
Once it's in, it's in. There is some minor maintenance required that will be not handled with our money, because it cannot be. And they have, the project proponents have budgeted for that within their, their own budgets.
There's, I think about 3,000 of maintenance they've budgeted for, and there's 5,000 of electrical that the town will pick up annually. Just, we talked about this in that Concom state of the town request. So there is an operating cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next project is the Lincoln School Chiller, or the HVAC, which I will presume that you are all already aware of, because it came through Capital as well. WCCP is putting in $50,000 of the request. This was presented to us from DPW and is one of the projects where we collaborated, it's probably overstating the term, because we never met with Capital, but are collaborating with Capital on this program. We felt like this one was another good candidate for CPA funding. HVAC systems for this school preserve the historical building, prevents decay, benefits air quality in the building, and supports programs that can be held kind of within the summer and at community, on a community-wide basis. So we approved $50,000 for that one.
And so implementation, timing on this, it will go through capital planning overseen by town staff, probably?
Yes. Yes. Yes, this one's entirely from DPW.
No question on the project, but I'd like to talk to you more later about how we can coordinate more with the capital planning committee on some of these.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Next on my list is pickleball, so I will hold that for the end. Next.
Actually, let's just take it up, because, let's just go ahead.
Okay.
Let Nick get out of here, maybe. Go ahead.
Lucky for Nick. Okay, so this project came from Friends of WinRec. And as you can tell, WinRec is also involved in the project. The original ask was for the full kind of design and installation of pickleball courts at Ginfield. We ultimately approved $50,000 for design and engineering for the project. I think at this point, I will turn it over to Nick to kind of provide an update on the sound study and where that money is going to go.
Yeah, so Friends of Winchester Recreation funded Kavanaugh and Tachi to come in and do an acoustical study of the area. Those, those study has been released to you all, I believe it was in your packet.
Yes.
So, so the goal of that was to get a baseline of what the, the sound is in, in the Ginfield area, which they were there for about a week or so, just doing the sound. Then we had a, a pickleball group come out and play pickleball during the sound study to measure what that effect would be without any sound mitigation, which they, they measured those results. And so from there, the, the next step is to make sure that when we go into design phase, we're utilizing that study to make sure that we mitigate any sound that is above what the normal level is. So that was the, pretty much kind of the, the gist of what we got for results. The, the sound levels obviously were a little bit higher than what it would be if there was no pickleball there. So in the next design phase with the money that we'll be getting for engineering and design, the scope will bring in Kavanaugh and Tachi for a small fee to come up with their mitigation. That's part of their overall proposal to the town. So we'll bring them back in for the mitigation so that we can make sure that those levels and whatever design we do with the pickleball, before we bring it to, to a construction phase, is going to bring those levels down. There's a multitude of different ways they can do that. So they'll, they'll be diving into that in this next phase. And then, so once we have a complete plan and a course of action, that's when our plan is to do some open meetings with the final phase and final, final project, so that we can get some feedback from the overall general public on how we designed it, what the mitigation will be, and how that's, that's the effect of the mitigation on the sound in that area. Our goal is to make sure that we're not disrupting any of the neighbors and making sure that the, the whole project is something that is, is accepted by those that it might affect. So.
Okay.
I'll just add briefly that I actually think this is a really good example of what the systems that we created are designed to kind of address. So, you know, in these discussions on the pickleball project, the WCCP was supportive, but wanted to know more about the sound study, wanted to know more about the scope, and really fully understand, you know, what the full ask was. And so that's why we ultimately decided to award a little bit less. And I'm really encouraged to hear that, you know, there's a really clear plan for moving forward, getting stakeholder approval, and getting a more clear budget to us for the next round.
So has the engineer been selected to do the next phase of design?
Uh, no, but the engineer that started the initial project was Chris Huntress. So we know, my, my, I'd like to continue working with Chris on the project and also bringing in Kavanaugh and Tachi in terms of the, the mitigation for the sound, so.
And you'll project manage it?
Uh, yes, the Recreation Department is, will, will be part of that with using other resources in the town. Special Project Manager hopefully will be firing on all cylinders at that point. But yeah, we will definitely have our hand in it.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay. You can, you can leave, Nick. You can hang tight. You might want to talk about, I don't know, playgrounds or something, but go ahead. Use your time as you wish, but Christina.
Do, I can actually, why don't I just do the other two?
Sure.
WinRec related proposals, just in case there are questions? And then I'll, I'll go back. So the next one is fencing restoration. So this is a proposal by WinRec for various fencing and backstop repair throughout town at six different playgrounds and fields, where, you know, high-use public playgrounds and athletic fields need really a lot of work on their fencing and their backstops. We'll have some pictures in the town meeting presentation to show kind of how those have deteriorated and how they need to be replaced. So the total project cost here is $112,000. And again, this is another capital coordination where Capital threw in, excuse me, 60,000 and asked us to make up the remaining 50. I'm missing 2,000 there. I'm not sure where those go, but we did coordinate with Capital and kind of split the cost of this project.
Just a, a question on this one. Leonard, is that for the backstop area? Because I noticed that fencing actually went in around the playground.
So Leonard was, so the original ask was $150,000. Were you able to creatively come up with some funding to get some fencing off the ground before the articles came and two of those projects have been completed? One was at Leonard Playground, and one was at McDonald Playground recently. 60-foot fencing on the backside of that brand-new McDonald Playground, make it look really nice. And then the eight-foot fencing on the back of Leonard.
And is that going to be town staff, DPW, led?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then the third project from WinRec is the Leonard Basketball Court Replacements. This is part of the ongoing Leonard Field restoration. Again, just specifically for the basketball court. It will completely revitalize that court and make it usable and much more accessible. So the total project cost for that is 90,000, and the WCCP is proposing to fund the full 90,000.
You also have Gin sod.
Number nine.
Are you related with that? Yeah?
It's, you know, it was one of our capital asks, but this ask was from Winchester Youth Baseball Softball.
I'll go to a next one.
I can, I can stick around for that one.
All right, assuming there's no questions on basketball, go to Ginfield sod and irrigation. So this one's from Winchester Youth Softball. The project is estimated to cost 40,000, $400,000. WCCP was asked for and approved $225,000. And this will be used to install irrigation in the field and also install new sod across the field. So happy to answer questions on that one, if you have any.
So who would oversee this project?
So this is, the project owner is Winchester Youth Softball, so they will oversee the project, working with town folks. We have created, over the summer, we created a template for how projects like this will work in the town and coordinate between the private entities and, you know, Special Projects Manager, if there is one, Town Hall, you know, anyone else available for that. And I'm happy to share that more widely to the select board, but that, this project would follow that process. Proud to write it. Thank you.
I did share it with the select board, so people have seen it.
I know. It's been a while, so I think everyone on the WCC forgot about it, so.
We think Youth Softball will be on point.
Is that, Youth Softball is going to actually project manage this one? Because I thought that was true for Borgard, but I bet Youth Softball is going to rely on town staff to project manage.
I can double-check the application, but that is what I have in the presentation.
You would know better than me.
Okay.
I do know, based on emails that I was copied on, that they are discussing these exact issues today.
Okay. Any other questions on the playgrounds, basketball courts, sod, pickleball? All right?
Yeah, so sorry, one, just to clarify, so the project is sponsored by Winchester Youth Softball in conjunction with the Field Management Committee and capital planning. So some, some group of those, but ultimate responsibility is Youth Softball.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, Nick.
Thanks. And do you want to go back, back up then to Sandborne House?
Sandborne House. Okay, so this is column repair. This project was proposed by the Winchester Historical Society, and this is to prepare, to repair the large columns outside of Sandborne House. This one is a bit different than the other projects in that this is a matching grant. So the Historical Society will apply for a grant in March 2026 from the Massachusetts Historical Commission for a total project cost of $225,000. And if they receive that money, our match will get them the rest of the way, and they anticipate completing the project by spring of 2027. And they need to restore these eight columns at the house, just because of concerns about structural damage to the house and aesthetics, and, and making the whole place more welcoming for the programming that they put on there.
Because I've been to town meeting before, do, in order for them to put their grant in in March, will they need to show that they already have matching funding?
Yes. Yes, it will be a component of the grant.
Is the total the 225, or what's the match? What's the grant amount?
The total is 225, and the match from us is the 112,000.
12.
So 50%.
Yep.
But whatever they get will match. So if they get 75, we'd match 75?
Um, yes. I'm not sure the project is feasible at a smaller amount, but theoretically, yes.
And who's responsible for doing this work?
Historical Society. I will say, I believe it is subject to the terms of their lease, so they would have some approval processes to go through with the town.
Okay. Then following along, Affordable Housing Trust, I think?
Thank you. Yes.
On us, but I think it's number seven.
That is. I have two left. Okay, so the next project is 164th Street. This is proposed by the Affordable Housing Trust, who will hopefully receive title to 164th Street at town meeting. So this one, we have approved funding for $350,000 to transform 164th Street into an affordable housing unit for the town. The house is about 1,600 square feet right now, three bedrooms, one and a half bathrooms. They expect to resell it for $400,000 or less, based on affordability restrictions. There has, I will flag that there was some discussion in our application and throughout the process of a potential ADU on the site, and this money has, is not associated with the ADU. I don't think they've decided whether or not they're going to pursue that.
They decided not to.
Okay, so this is.
That was a vote last week?
Yep.
Two weeks ago? Yeah, Marty gave me that update.
Okay. So that is, that does not impact the amount of funding that we've approved for the project. This is on a project basis, so we can just send money to the housing trust for them to use how they want. And this is, we've approved this on a project-specific basis, so if they don't end up spending $350,000, the money would revert back to the WCCP.
And AH, Affordable Housing Trust will oversee the work, find the contractor, see that the work is completed to their satisfaction?
Yes, exactly. I understand that they, I don't know if it's the final contract or what, but they've been in discussions with experts about the scope of work that's needed on the site.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay.
Last one is an easy one, because it comes partially from you all. So Borgard Park Restoration. The ask of the WCCP was $50,000 for this, and we approved $50,000 for this one. The project is a, our component of this is a small piece of a larger rehabilitation project at Borgard Park, but the funding is going to be used for landscaping, sand, picnic tables, fencing, refurbishing existing playground, removing broken playground equipment, exterior repairs and painting, and permitting associated with those activities. And I understand that the project proponents are going to utilize some combination of volunteer work and the money that we are submitting here and other money that they've raised to complete the project.
So who's going to project manage this? Friends?
This is another one where we're going to use that template project system that we came up with. So Friends of Wedge Pond would be the major project manager, kind of working with other town folks as appropriate.
Unlike the aeration, is there any operating cost, annual operating expense anticipated?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. So I know you're coming to our hearing on Wednesday night, for however many people are watching or in the room. Do you plan at town meeting to have, like, Youth Softball and the Friends of Wedge Pond? I know the Housing Trust will be there. But do you plan to have Historical Society and these proponents with you at town meeting or available to answer questions?
The latter. Yes, I have to get final approval from the moderator, but the plan is that I will present on all of the projects and answer the questions that I can answer, but have the project applicants available to answer project-specific questions if they come up.
Yep. I think that'll be huge. And normally that's, he would know which ones you intend to call on, so that makes sense.
Yes, and we have given Mary Ellen a list of those individuals, so she can see who's a town meeting member, who's not, to get everybody the proper authorization.
So like a question, I'll just pick on Youth Softball. We, you know, we've got a turf field at the high school, we have a turf field at Manchester Field. We've done some with debt exclusions, we've done some with ARPA money. We've, you know, a quarter million dollars on sod at a field. A question you might anticipate at town meeting is, what's the replacement cost? What's the plan when that gets worn down? What's the, what's the maintenance? Is there infrastructure? Do we have to get more sprinklers? So I don't know if we do need to get more sprinklers, but there's, you know, what is, what is contained in this project? And then what's the five or 10 years from now? What's the plan?
Yes.
Which is not a WCCP chairs necessarily to answer, it's the proponents, but the WCCP should be prepared for that question, I think.
Yep, understood. We did ask a lot of those questions of Winchester Youth Softball during their Q and A session. I'm not sure I could recall. The answer's off the top of my head right now, but yes, I hear your point.
Okay. Any other questions on the projects themselves? Any other questions on the projects themselves? So there's some that are sort of capital planning committee? It looks like there's like three or four that were on the CP.
There's more than that.
CPC's list?
I think I got five. And I got, total overlap was thirty-five percent, thirty-three percent. So the five were Lincoln Chiller, backstop and fence work, gin, pickleball design work, gin sodding. But they only put one ten in their plan, and so the other one fifteen, I guess, is additional scope. And then the ninety for the Leonard basketball part. Oh wait, no, that's not on here. So you guys did not fund that? No, you did, sorry, Leonard basketball ninety, okay, so those are the five. So I got thirty-three percent of the one million thirty-six thousand is capital. Comes off the capital planning queue.
And some, and two of these are on the warrant for capital. So do you know, and maybe we can just take it up with the moderator, of how he plans to do? We'll do the capital motion first, maybe, because that comes up earlier in the warrant. And if that passes, that probably bodes well for the WCCP portion?
Yes.
As opposed to taking them out and take them up at one time with the W, with the WCCP? Okay.
Yeah, we, I mean, we did break down all of the projects into individual motions, so we could theoretically pull it out, but I think your proposal makes more sense.
It's two thirds, right, so it passes there.
Yeah, it's his discretion, for sure. Okay, then I do have a question on the personnel article, but I'm gonna let, see if the board has any other questions. On the projects themselves.
Comment, but if you have questions, I should.
Yeah, I don't want to move to, I don't want to move off this to something else until we're done with this.
Comment, I think this is a huge amount of work for you and the whole committee, so thank you for that. I think these projects are all, you know, very well considered and well discussed. A third of them overlap with, with capital planning, without really even trying to do that, which is great. So, you know, I know we're voting our positions later, given it's all fresh in people's minds. I, I would personally be happy to vote our position now, if others are, appreciate others may not be.
Do people want to vote positions on this? And I just got a quick note on the fencing, that the total cost is a hundred and eleven K, capital's planning sixty-one, funding sixty-one, and WCCP is doing fifty thousand on fencing, so.
Thank you for finding that extra one thousand dollars.
It just came to me from a helpful viewer at home.
Just one comment, if you don't mind.
Sure, we can, comments on these projects and then we can, we can take a motion, I'm fine with that. And then I do want to come back to personnel.
Yeah, thanks, Michelle, and certainly supportive of, motion certainly supportive of the recommendations from the WCCP. I just wanted to say thank you, especially to you and David Miller, for chairing and shepherding this process forward. It was an extremely heavy lift. And I know we put pressure on the committee to get things going and to spend some of this money on projects that have been really backed up for years. And the CPA funds are really there to support community-based projects. I think that you guys really hit the nail on the head. These are projects that otherwise wouldn't be prioritized in our normal capital queue, but are important to the community. And so I just wanted to, to say thank you. It was a, a year of hard work that I think will benefit the committee in, in years to come. And also just say to residents that, that there will be another CPA cycle, starting in January or so. Applications will be out and there is no project that is too small to apply for financial support from the committee, as long as they're connected to affordable housing, historic preservation, and outdoor space and recreation. So thank you again, certainly supportive and happy to support a motion.
Thank you. Sorry, I will just say that I appreciate that. David Miller really takes all of the credit for that. I get to be chair now, but he was chair for the whole process, so.
We vote favorable action on Article thirty-five.
Second.
Twenty-eight.
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 Second.
Any additional discussion?
Memorize my town meeting numbers.
Okay, all those in favor of the WCCP article?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
And Christine, you mentioned one point six is the full funding round. Is that including or excluding the state match?
We don't have a state match.
We don't have a state match this year.
Okay, so with the state match, you'd expect it to be one eight to one nine?
It depends, yes, for next year, I expect about that much more, yeah.
Okay, so, and I know this will probably come up in the town managers' hearing on Wednesday, but there's also a motion under Personnel to add a resource for the WCCP. So figuring that we have this on camera and you're here now, if you could talk us through maybe what that is? We haven't voted on the personnel positions yet, but if you could talk us through what that, that ask is and what the roles are expected or duties might be?
Yes, I will be happy to do that. So at the moment, the WCCP has a recording secretary that takes our minutes. She does a fabulous job. And what we are asking Town Meeting to do is approve a new role for a part-time CPA administrator. This would be no more than ten hours a week. And this would take on the current administrative role that our recording secretary has and then work with us on all kind of administrative aspects of the WCCP's job. So as I mentioned earlier, David Miller was really instrumental this summer in making sure that this funding process went smoothly, but it was a massive amount of work for him. We have a box account where we upload all of the applications and organize them, coordinate outreach to applicants for meetings, help set hearing schedules, help handle, you know, general administrative duties like meeting packets and things like that. But then he also kind of responded to all inquiries and I'm just going through the list of everything that we're asking for here. Work with town staff on the funding and the, and the funds and managing our finances. And kind of just that whole system this summer. In addition to all of that work, once Town Meeting hopefully approves some or all of these projects, we are going to need to start actually getting the money out to them, which will involve creating grant agreements, hopefully using town council's expertise with that, with a form grant agreement that we can adapt to all of the projects as we have them. And we need somebody to be able to kind of run that program for us, make sure that all of the grant agreements are in place, monitor compliance. We're going to be requiring at least quarterly check-ins on the status of projects. So somebody who can take in that information, track it, make sure that everything is staying on track. Somebody who's gonna work with the special project manager or the project manager for a project if it's not somebody at town hall. And I would say that's it, but that's a lot. So that's, that's the list of what we're imagining. So again, as I mentioned, it would be about ten hours a week. We are not asking for an appropriation for this from Town Meeting because it fits within our existing administrative budget for this year. We had asked for a small amount of administrative funding from Springtown Meeting and we have enough money left in that budget to pay them until the next town meeting. So we would likely increase our administrative ask at that point. I am not sure by how much, but we don't need to do that right now.
So this is to create the position on the comp schedule at what level?
PT thirteen.
Any questions on that? I mean, I'll just say, this could be where we come out later, but I understand, bless you, whoever that was. I understand the need for this potentially down the road, and just looking at the first, you know, and grant agreements need to get created, that's for sure. But with all of these projects being managed by other entities or by town staff or by town project manager, I wonder if there's really ten hours of busy in a week. I think there's probably seasonality to the work. You know, heavy lift after town meeting to get some meeting packets, to get, you know, compliance and grant agreements out. There's meetings once a month. I just think that's a little, maybe it's a little much in the first year when Friends of Breck are doing two or three projects, town staff is doing two or three projects, capital planning's doing some as well. But I think the lift is pretty light on CPA, though I don't doubt we need to get our things buttoned up pretty tightly. But that's just my thought.
I appreciate that.
So what's the annual's cost?
I, hold on, let me find it.
Rough justice.
Well, it would be between, I have the annual sixty-six to ninety-six full-time, so we'd pro-rate that down.
By quarter?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're talking about one, fifteen to twenty-five thousand?
Yeah.
And you're asking for that at Springtown Meeting?
Fall.
Oh, fall.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Which article is this?
It's under Personnel Board, it's a motion, under twenty-seven.
Oh, sorry.
It's separate on the schedule, that's.
Yep.
So, sorry, I just carried away. It's a.
It's a separate.
Separate in the yellow folder.
This is why I didn't see it.
So it's just to add it to the schedule on the, on the Personnel Board motion?
Yes.
And this is already in the CPA budget?
For this year, yes, yeah.
So it would. Allow you to advertise and hire for the position?
Correct, yes.
I know that I would say that this role is in the budget, there's an administrative budget that the CPA's put. What they do with it, whether they did that as contracted resources, town resources, or an FTE, I think is, is the decision. I wouldn't say that this duty is in their admin budget, the money is in the admin budget.
Right, the money is in the budget and then the Personnel Board article, the Personnel Board motion creates the position, which presumably aligns.
Right, so, sorry, my, so the, all we're talking about is motion seven, which is the creation of the position?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the, sorry, my question wasn't clear then. The appropriation for additional money would be Springtown Meeting?
Yes, it would be within, it would be within our request to Springtown Meeting for our administrative budget for that.
All we're talking about Fall Town Meeting is the creation of the, of the, you know, sort of role in the Personnel Board?
Yes, to allow us to advertise for the position.
Kind of an administrative.
Yeah.
It's an administrative position, but it's, it's PT thirteen, so it's up to, it could be potentially up to ninety-six thousand dollars, you know, annually if it was. Right?
Yes, if it was full-time, it would be, but it would be ten hours a week.
Sorry, I just, I was saying it's an administrative ask at Fall Town Meeting, not, not the position itself.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And then appropriation could be ninety-six thousand or twenty-four thousand or any number, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions on CCP in general? That was mine.
Was there a desire to talk about capital coordination?
Not right now.
Okay, great.
But thank you.
Welcome.
All right.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Christina.
I appreciate the vote, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, transfer station permit fees.
He's okay.
Bob and Nick. So we're gonna, just for people in the room, gonna hear from DPW, they have a recommendation. We'll ask if anyone from the public wishes to be heard, kind of pull up seats on the side, then the select board will deliberate. But go ahead, Tom and Nick.
Good evening, Bob, last year Director of Public.
Bob and Nick, sorry, I called you Tom by accident.
It's all right, Nick Harley, who runs our transfer station, is here with us. So tonight, we're gonna circle back to where we talked about last Monday, talk about the increases that we are proposing. We see that our disposal prices have gone up four point nine percent, four point five for the next year. So we have proposed increase in our commercial rates by five percent to keep up with our contracts of disposing of trash. We're looking at increasing our commercial mattress rate from twenty-five dollars to thirty-five dollars. Right now, it costs.
Twenty-six fifty.
Twenty-six fifty to get rid of it, so we're, we're losing money at this point. We're looking to increase the commercial recycling from a hundred and fifty-five to a hundred and sixty dollars a ton. And then we're looking to increase the compost and leaves from fifty to fifty-five dollars a ton. Questions on those proposals?
Is there a recommendation on the residential permit?
We were, our recommendation would be to keep it the same as it was last year.
Okay. And the commercial permit would be applied for the out-of-town, the couple of pilot haulers? Two, if that grows by a few more, it'll be applied, the same increase, same percentage increase?
Correct.
For the Winchester-based businesses and non-Winchester-based businesses? And scale fee will be applied, one day use, anybody using it. The scale fee would be across the board?
Correct.
Mattress across the board?
Mattresses, I believe we have pulled out as a commercial mattresses, that we were gonna keep the residential at twenty-five.
Okay. All right. Anybody from the public wish to be heard on this topic? If you do, raise your hand or come on up. All right. Motion or debate from the select board?
Well, so, thank you both for the recommendation. You know, we have the memo which was sent to, who have your memo? And then we have the memo sent by the Works Room Three Trash and Transfer Station State of the Town Group, which was, I thought, very thoughtful and well-done. You know, they, they looked at the, the amount of tonnage that the commercial haulers are accountable for and then the amount of revenue. And then they, from there computed, you know, how much each side is paying per ton. I'll just say it, because I think it's important to just say it on the record, which is that the haulers pay a hundred and ninety-three dollars a ton and the residents pay two hundred and eighty-five dollars a ton, which is a function of both our permit fee being on the higher end and you've, you know, that should be equal. You have two choices, commercial goes up, residential goes down, or both. I think their analysis is a pretty large increase. To even make it equal, you know, if you just did it straight through the commercial, it would be like a fifty percent increase. And then it would be less if we were bringing residential down. But just giving that as context for, for your ask, which is, I mean, five percent increases, you know, the one ninety-three is only gonna become two oh three or two oh one versus two eighty-five that the residential is paying, so. So I think that, you know, the commercial side is still getting a pretty, a pretty good deal.
Very good deal, we'll say.
A very good deal.
Very good deal. Yeah, I mean, our, our rates, I mean, the numbers that we used don't even sound worse than that. Ours is a hundred and eighty-four dollars a ton is what commercial is and the residence is three hundred and ten dollars a ton, based on our numbers from last year.
That's definitely worse than we had in the other.
Three and ten for residency, one eighty-four for.
And don't, don't forget, people who pick up, who, who get trash pickup don't pay for the capital expense either.
But there's more to the transfer station than one ton of trash. There's recycling, there's, you know, all sorts of other programs that we, we offer there as well.
Okay. Any additional discussion or questions?
Anything, please?
Yeah, I know we revisited the, some of the fees last year for the commercial waste and part of that was just because they had not seen many increases over time. They, they'd been sort of stable for commercial while the residential permits have increased, you know, they've nearly doubled in the past ten years. So I, I think, you know, it made sense at the time that we increased it at that point. And the, you know, sort of long-term increases comparing residential to commercial, we've still seen a lot more to the residential side to that point. So I appreciate the, you know, looking at how we, how we are managing the costs and the costs that then the, the town incurs on this. I'm always, I'm like looking, I'm looking at our packet from a year ago tomorrow to just take a look at, at what that was and to, you know, check my memory of it. That's helpful to see that.
And I know you guys have been in a lot of meetings with Brissette and Hefeas and Rachel and others on taking, drilling down on this data and looking at alternatives, and thank you for you both, and thank you for the volunteers sitting in the front row as well. We wouldn't have the richness of the detail without all of your collective work, so thank you for that. Does anyone want to make a motion?
You're recommending one-eighty-five goes to what, sorry? One-eighty-four goes to?
The current rate is one-seventy-five.
One-seventy-five, so one-eighty-four is the average per ton.
So you would take that to one-eighty-three-seventy-five.
And do you know, you know, it looks like for the, the two pilot program haulers, it's about like a hundred-dollar, give or take, increase on them, or maybe a little bit more than that, but not substantial. Do you have an idea of what the sort of estimated increase for a hauler would be? Would it be over all five percent of their costs, or does that base, is that based on sort of the mix of what they're?
It would depend on what, what material they're bringing in.
I'm happy to make a motion here, I just wanted to gauge the will of the Board before I do that, so if people look at the, I'm gonna use, you know, Bob's numbers, three-ten and one-eighty-four, and say, we want to try to collapse that in a little bit, meaning try to bring the resi down a little, the three-ten is not the sticker, that's of course a per ton, but, but the sticker's three-forty, we want to try to bring that in a bit and bring commercial up a bit. I wouldn't want to bring commercial up beyond the one-eighty-four unless we were also bringing resi down, right? So I, I kind of want to make a, that's why I would, before I just say, let's do one-ninety, or some number bigger than one-eighty-three-seventy-five, I would love to hear from the other Select Board members if they're also interested in putting some of that money to work in bringing the residential rate a little bit below three-forty.
Can I make a comment for?
Yeah, please.
So, our increase of the five percent is to take care of what the increased costs are gonna be to run the, the station, because that's gonna be what it's gonna cost us to get rid of our trash, so if you increase that to five percent and drop residents, we're gonna come, we're gonna be below on our.
I'm not, so I'm, I'm, thank you, that's a very helpful comment. What I'm suggesting is if we went above the one-eighty-three-seventy-five and used a bit of that to bring the residential down, because when the residents are paying three-ten a ton and the commercials making one-eighty-four a ton, you can, we can start to narrow that gap a little bit, but, but I hear you, you're saying the one-eighty-three-seventy-five is just to sort of.
Keep that up.
Keep light on, yeah, quote-unquote, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be open to, you know, up to one-ninety on the, the commercial and to reduce that on the residential side, and I know that we've talked about this in our recent meetings, but it, it's really hard to hit everything perfect, you know, when, with kind of funding between the commercial and the residential permit, and so it looks like, hey, you know, we're a hundred thousand dollars in the black this year, well, we might be two-hundred in the red next year, so market conditions are really hard for us to respond to, and you guys have done a great job and add some predictability there, but, you know, managing our, our commercial and residential permits is, is difficult, so I would want to go above the one-ninety on the commercial side yet, but certainly if we can give some breathing room to, to residents, you know, on the, that side, I think it would be helpful.
And I'll just add, I agreed with the fir, I mean, I agree with both parts of what you said, but the first part I think is really important, which is, it's like four percent more, it's not like we, you know, it's not like we have a twenty-five percent, you know, profit margin here, it's a, just a tiny surplus that can easily reverse itself.
Yep. So do you have the math clear on what we think the residential would go down by? Would it go down by five dollars, is it just to commensurate?
I think you guys would need to advise us on that.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Well, we can, we can try, we can try to figure it out here, right? So, how much additional revenue with the one-eighty-four, if we put an additional five, six dollars on it, how much would that bring in?
So to go up to what? From one-seventy-five to?
One-ninety. But it's really the six dollars from one-eighty-four to one-ninety, right? That's, that's Bob's point.
Five, I would say it's gonna be close to five dollars.
When you divide that over the five thousand permits, or forty-seven-hundred?
Forty-seven-hundred.
Oh, okay. So that would take it to two, to, to, three, thirty-five, but then, I think, Michelle, you pointed this point last time, there's additional, maybe things from the commercial hauler pilot or stuff, you can, you can go further down from.
Yep, I want to just be mindful of, you know, everyone's comfort level and making sure we break even, so if it's just, if it's five dollars in one direction and take five dollars on the other side, I wouldn't want to go too deep and potentially put us at risk of not at least turning a profit, so. Just want to make sure we get the math right, so that we vote the motions correctly, so that Mary Ellen has some clear guidance.
What I'd also say is, you know, we did. Increase the, I lost my window. You know, we did increase the commercial rates last year, we were at three-forty for a permit in twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five, and so maybe it's, you know, stay consistent at twenty-twenty-six for the residential permit, because. You know, we've been growing, increasing since twenty, twenty-eighteen pretty rapidly, and, and we have the commercial increase as-is. I think we hadn't seen the commercial increase last year.
The last commercial increase we had was February two-thousand-and-twenty-three.
Two-thousand-and-twenty-three, okay, so didn't we, we change something in twenty-five?
I believe what you're thinking about was, it was a quirk of how we voted, that the Winchester-based businesses had a lower permit, and we voted to bring that all up to parity, that they were all, all the same.
So Paris, you were looking for the will of the Board, Bill, do you want to weigh in on commercial, I'm sorry, residential permit, I think is the question, right? Paris, you're trying to get the, the.
That was a question.
Will of the Board? Do you want to weigh in, Bill? As we can take a vote?
Yes, we've been the same.
I think I'm, I'm just most comfortable going with what was recommended by the transfer station team here. I appreciate trying to give something back in the residential, but for, for putting more pressure on the commercial haulers for five bucks on a ticket for the residential use doesn't seem like a huge win, and I'd rather just try to keep things stable and have that buffer, because everything eventually gets more expensive. And it seems like we don't really have certainty at the moment, and I think we should be moving forward with this, as to where these numbers need to land, so I think you guys put together a good suggestion here, and I trust you.
Well, have you got any more numbers there?
Yeah, it's still coming out to about five dollars.
Five dollars, so I think what we're, if, if it goes five dollars down on the residential and additional five on commercial, we do get some certainty, we don't leave ourselves at risk, if we trust Bob's math, which I do, and I think the other thing, I understand.
Just for clarification, you're talking five dollars and five percent?
Five percent and five dollars, correct. And it's, it's more than five percent, correct.
It's five percent plus five dollars. Good.
But I think to, to Bill's point about keeping things, you know, if we take this recommendation as-is, which I can see value to, we also still, we're still in the up-and-down position, the upside-down position of residential is paying more than a hundred dollars more per ton to throw away their trash, we're trying to bring that back a bit into parity, without doing it with a massive increase, so.
Yeah, that's.
We have the numbers if somebody wants to, I think we're probably good on things like mattresses and, and scale charges, I think it's just, it's truly this, the detail on these.
Yeah, I think we've been nibbling around the edges a little bit on, on, you know, some of the, the fees, and I think that's been, been helpful and necessary, but to Michelle's point, I think at some point that parity needs to come in line, and it can't happen just in one year, right?
Right. Do we want to put, so if you, if you put the extra from one-eighty-four to one-ninety, we could put five dollars off the residential permit, we also did implement the commercial hauler pilot, which is about what, forty-six thousand of annual?
Right.
So, we have five thousand permits, that's up to another nine dollars, we could, we could take off, meaning do we want to take half of that as well and take ten bucks off? Take half from the commercial rates, half from the commercial hauler, half, half the commercial hauler, we're still just banking, and take ten bucks off? Because we, we did increase that revenue, it's, it's a question, I'm not, I'd be open to it, I don't.
Yeah, that was the, kind of the purpose of us, of, you know, exploring these other pilot programs and these other fees, right, is to, you know, bring down the residential permit ultimately, right, and not to put too much pressure on the commercial side, so I would, I would be, you know, happy with that motion if it came.
Okay, I think it's time for someone to make a motion.
Okay, this is a.
We can take them one at a time. If that makes sense.
Okay, so, so the, basically, we have to read all the numbers on this page.
Before you guys make the motion, do you want to hear some people's opinion on the agenda or not?
I asked for public comment, like, ten minutes ago.
When is the right moment? Is this the right moment?
It was like ten minutes ago, yeah.
Meaning you would not like to take a public comment?
No.
Okay.
Unless there's new information that wasn't said when I asked for it the first time.
Is that an L?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I would move that we increase the commercial waste hospital fee to one-hundred-and-ninety dollars, the commercial hauler household waste fee to one-hundred-and-ninety dollars, the commercial mixed fee to two-hundred-and-ten dollars, the building demo debris fee to two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and seventy-five cents, five dollar, the commercial recycling to a hundred-and-sixty dollars, compost and leaves to fifty-five dollars, hauler mattresses to fifty, to, to thirty-five dollars. And reduce the residential permit from three-hundred-and-forty to three-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Second.
You have all that written down, I hope, Paris?
I think Bob does.
Bob does? Yeah, let's just check that.
So the first two, excuse me, for the.
For the record.
Are now one-hundred-and-ninety?
Yep. Patty, do you have everything?
Everything else I have.
Okay. All right, so that's the slate. Are you good, Patty?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the slate of changes? We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second, yeah.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm contemplating, I'm, I'm looking at these, because I think. We're just doing some, you know, previous, on what we've done for the past two increases. It is that five percent, that five percent is a little bit lower than what the previous increases have been, so. I think, you know, doing a round number and sort of doing ten to fifteen makes sense, I don't know if, you know, I think, because we're doing it on the fly and we haven't really gotten specific comments on it, I would be inclined to say a, a bit lower on that and to leave our, our residential permit as-is, but. I would make a friendly amendment, or, you know, I'm not opposed to this, I just think it might be a big jump since it's a big increase on the commercial haulers. But also, you know, Bob and Nick.
About eight and a half percent, just to give you a number.
Yeah, we went, you know, one-sixty to one-seventy-five, so going to one-ninety is that same sort of dollar value in tonnage. So that's, you know, kind of reasonable.
Are you looking at, at the aspect of the business or the resident?
I'm, well, I'm thinking, you know, I, we're increasing this in, I'm just looking at like, you know, how often are we doing these increases, right? We did it in two thousand, twenty-twenty-three, which Patty gave me, we did it in twenty-twenty-one. Are we gonna be upping it to fifteen dollars every two years? Is that in line with what our, you know, our costs are? Or is this, we've had increased costs, we're in a new cycle, we need to meet the need, and then we have, you know, our four to five years of contract, and we'll come back.
So these numbers are balancing everything so that, you know, we're not making money and trying not to lose money?
Yep.
These numbers are just balancing equity?
Trying to balance equity.
I'll call the vote.
I'd also need an effective date on that as well, I was thinking.
January one?
January first, twenty-twenty-six.
Yep. Okay, any additional discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And I'm as well, thank you.
Thank you guys, appreciate it, thanks.
Thanks, you. That was a lot of work.
All right. Next up, the Washington Swanton Street LDA, we have that, it was a change for the, a change from the developer to make some adjustments to the number of units and the design of the building, so we updated the LDA to reflect an additional affordable unit at sixty percent AMI, and so there's now thirteen units at sixty percent where there used to be twelve, and we have an updated LDA to reflect increased unit count and a mix of affordability and versus not, so we have a motion to approve that LDA to get it back to the developer, and they can move forward with ZBA planning and their general development process.
Move the, we approve the LDA with the.
Twenty-second amendment.
The twenty-second amendment to the LDA as presented, it's, I think, our, our hope that this is the final amendment, I think we've come to agreement with the developer here, and who's been very collaborative and, and I think hopes to move things forward by the end of February or so through the zoning board, so, so I, I move that we approve the, the LDA, the twenty, twenty-second amendment to the LDA as, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anthea did. Yep. Select Board Committee updates, Paris, did you want to talk, we have State of the Town deck, and was any of?
And there's, there's no real other update, I think, you know, we'll try to get everyone together again on Friday, I think we just need to touch base once before Town Meeting. What I left at the table for everyone is a rough draft of the deck I would intend to share with the TMMA info sessions tomorrow and Thursday. You know, I, I think before Town Meeting, I would also probably email it out to Town Meeting, because Article One presentation is five minutes, it's a, it's a draft though, so if there's any edits to it, feel free to just, anybody, just feel free to email them to me, or give me a marketable copy of it.
And Paris, what is the, the time and date again on those Town Meeting Member Association?
Tomorrow, yeah, it's a good question, tomorrow and Thursday, and I believe we're doing them at seven, either seven or seven-thirty, just one second.
And, and that's also on Zoom?
Also on Zoom.
Okay.
Paris, I'm sending edits across the table. Dog ear the pages.
I'll send you mine after the meeting, just a couple of tweaks. And you plan to go through all nineteen pages tomorrow?
Yeah, I mean, in fairness, like, five of them are, are cover slides, but yes, they're in section breaks, but I'm gonna go through as much of it as I can, it's probably about twenty-plus, twenty, twenty-two minutes of talking, and then, and then, you know, forty-five minutes for questions.
Okay. All right, any other committee updates? I did not go to FinCom last week, I'm going on Wednesday after the managers' hearing to go over Fall Town Meeting articles, and we've, Patty has been doing a terrific job getting other folks to attend for the Town Manager's Hearing, School Committee, late breaking news, School Committee is gonna have their own public hearing on the Mystic School and GIS articles, and it's gonna roll into a regularly scheduled meeting this week, so we don't expect to have them as guests, Patty, I think that was just a late-in-the-day decision by School Committee, but we'll cover everything else here. Conservation Commission's gonna be here, Rangel Ridge Restorers District will be here, Town Manager will be here, we'll be here, so. Mary Ellen will be here, okay, so lots to come on that. Any other updates? All right, let's go to Forest Ridge, so I know some folks were here to give public comment, and then we asked to send them to the back, but if we have questions, we can call them back up. the back, but if we have questions, we can call them back up. Tracy, I would ask a question for you, if you could, if you'd come up to the table. And if you don't know the answer, that's okay, I just wanted to ask, I had received a note, I'd been copied earlier in October, I think, maybe right after you had presented to us, about land conservation assistance grants, which the town could apply for, for things like appraisals and engineering to pursue a conservation, sort of restriction, actually working on the agreement itself. So could you, and, and it was Elizabeth Scott, Liz, who sent it, and she signed it as a forest steward?
Yes.
Could you maybe explain what that is? I know you talked about stewardship project, but what do you, what do we know about the grant and the timing of that grant?
I, to be completely honest.
Sorry to put you on the spot there, but.
Yes, I don't know that much about that grant, we've been focusing on the forest stewardship program that's available through DCR, to think about the assessing our forested parcels and what needs to be done. Liz Scott is a relatively new volunteer associated with the Conservation Commission, she has, she is not a forester, but she has experience in managing a forest, and is, has brought to the Conservation Commission some of the, the grant, proposed, the, the grant programs that are available at the state level. So, this, this particular one, I'm not as familiar with as I am with some of the others.
So the note I had it was for, so it's not necessarily the purchase price support, right, it says it's 90% of expenses for appraisals, title examination, site assessment, survey, and legal fees associated with the acquisition or deed drafting, so this would be after purchase, but to actually get into, get this into a conservation restriction, there would be work to specifically update deeds and things, and there's a state program, it looks like, to get 90 cents, 90% back. Okay.
Yes, and it is reimbursable as well, right? So it can be for what we've spent already to this point, legal fees and, you know, ancillary costs, and I think it's, it's on a rolling basis as well, so I know Liz has already met with the, the state on this and proposed it.
And Tracy, the expectation would be select board, if we were to, if, if town meeting were to approve this, select board would be the applicant, or would the ConCon be the applicant, do you know?
I think it would be the purchaser.
Select board, then.
So it would be select board. One of the options is for the Conservation Commission to actually be the purchaser, and then a conservation restriction would not be required, because that would be automatically conservation land.
Okay. That was my question from earlier, so thank you.
Okay. Just to build on that, are there other grants that you're aware of available for purchase, acquisition of conservation land?
Yes, there are. We are going, we are looking into those, we didn't necessarily have time to do that before the fall town meeting, but we would be doing that and seeing whether there are funds that would be available retroactively, or if there's a, depending on when the actual purchase occurs, we would be applying for grants.
And is the, um, we got a lot of emails, and some indicated that the portion of the property is part of a watershed for the reservoir, is that accurate?
For the reservoir.
For our reservoir.
Bill Band is shaking his head in the back, would you like to come on?
Julie.
That was in my letter, yeah.
She come up here.
You can come on up, so that people, so the camera can catch you. Well, more like the microphone and people.
Are we, okay, nevermind.
Um, yeah, so all the critical environmental areas are mapped on Mass GIS, and the map that I had in my letter, it shows that there's part, part of the property, the wetlands that are at the top, are in the watershed of the North Reservoir, and they're actually indicated as being protect, protected zones, so the water from, like, a stream that runs through there runs into the North Reservoir.
And, and Pars, I think, Anthony had a different question, but my concern was in answering questions around financial plan as well as stewardship, I was just trying to give an answer to the people closest to it, so that's why they're at the table. So if the select board has other questions for folks, like neighbors and Tracy, we can ask them, otherwise, if there's any other questions that we can answer. No? Okay. All right, next up.
Wait, so, sorry, so, we've gotten 15 emails from residents, some of whom I'm worried think the select board is trying to develop the land into a big housing project, I think we need to have a discussion about this, because.
We can, I, I didn't know people wished to have a discussion about this.
I wished.
I don't know what we're doing right now, honestly, like, I have been so confused by this project for months now, and I'm on the select board, so Pars, please continue.
Wait a second, Bill.
Sorry, Michelle, yeah, go ahead.
Wait a second, Bill, so, we're having discussion, I asked if there were more questions for people who had questions, I didn't hear anything, we can still have a discussion, or we can move on to the next agenda item?
Right.
The project is, the project was, two or four units of affordable housing on the lot that's closest to Forest Ridge, that's what was into WCCP application. WCCP and others said this was a much better project if it's just straight up open space acquisition, that's what came back to the select board on September 19th, that was not supported, went on to the warrant under two select board members' names, that's the project. It's not wildly different from what we discussed on September 19th, and the only change from what we put forward in the WCCP in August was to remove the affordable housing component.
Can I answer Pars's question here on the, the housing piece, and maybe that'll clarify things for, for Bill a little bit as well?
My question?
I don't think anyone can clarify my questions until I ask them, that's, it's kind of presumptive, I mean, we've been talking about this property for the last, at least six to nine months, and it seems like the project.
Several years.
Several years, and it seems like the, the intent of what we need to do shifts all the time, like, we're just trying to find a justification to buy it. I agree that it deserves to be, we need to conserve it, I think that's a great idea, that's wonderful, but how we do it needs to be better thought out, better planned, we don't even have a, an offer, or a demand, or a price from the sellers yet, and I've said it over and over and over again, that we need to be better prepared going into town meeting, and there's too much here that I don't understand, that we haven't worked out, that I'm not comfortable with, and as I see that there are options for things like trusts, for, for, um, you know, state funding that's about to come online, hopefully by the end of legislative session, and we're doing it at a time when our town is in a very tight financial situation, I think we need to really measure, not just twice, but three times, not rush into this, and, you know, I'm, I'm just been, you know, $3 million deserves a lot of consideration and time and planning, and I feel like we haven't got there, and the messaging and the communication has been mixed, and, listen, the four of you can agree with me or disagree with me, but that's, that's how I felt, and that shouldn't be a surprise to any of you, because I've said that multiple times, sadly only in the executive session, but, um, that's where I am. I think that, one of the strangest things to me is the fact that this started off with an idea of a much lower purchase price than what we're looking at right now, and the idea of much more going into a conservation for the sake of a tax break, and I don't know why or when that disappeared, but.
When the, when the sellers rejected that offer is when that disappeared, which you do have the details of.
Yeah, but I don't understand why, and why.
They don't have to justify why they rejected our offer.
I can, I can provide that.
They can just reject our offer, they own the land.
That's fine, no.
I mean, I, I think that is what happened, we thought we would purchase, and then we thought they would donate, they said, no, purchase the whole thing, so here we are.
So I think what we're having is the debate, and that was my, my question wasn't even so much substantively about the, the, it, it does seem like a lot of people think there's a large housing project coming that maybe the select board had something to do with, which is, is not true in either half of that, but, but I think what I'm asking for is just that we have a dialogue here where we share our views, and I, I am worried that I got 15 emails, um, that were, some of which were sentenced, most of which were not, one of which by a, you know, medical doctor, going in great depth into the types of illness that would be created by allowing for a project, that hasn't been proposed in nine years, and that was at that time rejected by mass housing for being deficient on a number of criteria. And so I, I just think it's important that, when I get that kind of luminous input from a neighborhood, that we all have a chance to respond to it and explain our perspective, because otherwise, it's, it's kind of a, Mike, I appreciate you had an info session, and then I get.
I didn't.
You.
Met with the neighbors?
No, I attended an info session that the neighbors held, so.
Okay. I didn't hold one. I don't, I'm not trying to mischaracterize anything, so that's a fair correction, so you attended an info session that the neighbors held?
Yeah.
And then we get this deluge of, of emails, which seem to assume sort of an imminent proposal or an urgency, and makes it seem as though, you know, those of us who have expressed some reservations about taking this to fall town meeting are in favor of putting up a, a large residential development in that space, and that's, that's simply not true, and so.
Not even feasible.
I would, I would, I would just, I can make my points that I, that I've made in other forums, if that's helpful, but, which I think it is, I, I just would think it's helpful for us to share our views in light of how much public comment we've gotten on this, both email and live.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to respond to any of those, and we've been talking about this in, for, for quite a while, and in public session and in executive session, part of the urgency is that we had an option that we executed with the, the property owner for exclusive negotiations, and when that expired, they said they didn't want to extend it, right, and they said that if we don't have this on the warrant for fall town meeting, they're going to go back out to, to developers and to market the property, and my understanding is that they have spoken to some, and so, they want to, A, sell the property, they would love for the town to put a conservation restriction on it and to, to, to own it, and for the betterment of the community, and so, I, I think it is a mischaracterization entirely of the emails that were sent from the neighborhood.
What, did I mischaracterize them?
What was a mischaracterization of what the message from the emails were, right? So I think there was one email that said that the select board is going to turn this into a big affordable housing project.
I don't, I don't think they're saying where, I'm getting that sense, but go ahead.
So, um, so we are not, so this article, Article 35, is, is exclusively to put a conservation restriction on the property, so it would not be developed, I understand that when people are, and you don't have to shake your head, Bill, so I understand that there are, there's language in there that people would like to be more clear about that, where it's identified clearly what our motivation is in the background, maybe a, an amendment to the.
Motion.
To the motion itself would be, would be helpful, I would entertain that, I'm certain Michelle would as well, so, there, my goal all the way through has been to really listen to the, the wishes of the, the neighborhood, which we've hear, heard year over year, that they are concerned about that area being developed, and we've seen a lot of pressure in that neighborhood over the past several years, since the original proposal was there, with the veil project, with, with ever source, with, with traffic, with everything, and it really takes one homeowner to sell their property to the developer to unlock that property to someone, and I think that it's maybe not going to happen in one month or one year, but it will happen, and I think it, it's too valuable of land, that is what the message coming from the WCCP is, when they supported, um, the $1.5 million acquisition price, so, you know, we're, we're trying to kind of balance the, the financial objectives here with the objectives of the neighborhood, and the CPA really unlocked this for us as well, right, because they're, one of the main focuses of that revenue is outdoor space and recreation, so, we pulled away the housing piece, even though that was important to me, I think we pulled it away because the stakeholder groups, WCCP, neighbors, saw the value, as Michelle said, in, in preserving it more than establishing housing there, so, you know, we've, we've been, we've been responsive, and unfortunately, when we're negotiating projects like that, and somebody says this is the, the end of the road for a negotiation, it does put some pressure on us, I would have loved to have, you know, more time to, to negotiate this over a period of a couple of years, but the time is now, I think the threat is real when you live in that neighborhood, I don't live in that neighborhood, but I can appreciate that threat, since I've been in town, I've been surprised at the, the lengths that developers go through in order to put developments and houses in places, including blasting, et cetera, so I think those concerns are real, I don't live there, but I believe the neighbors.
So we've been talking about this for three years, so it's, it's, the recent negotiations have been recent, but this has been at least three, if not four, years, I think the concerns, while it's in the background, that indicates it will be placed in conservation restriction, it's not in the article or the motion, so.
I would entertain anything that you put forward as an amendment to that.
I'm just responding because you stated that this article is for a conservation restriction, it's not, and that is feedback that has been given, that it's not in there. You know, the other challenge here is, um, you know, this motion is for half of the value with the intent of the other half coming from the CPA, and for those who are here and sat through the presentation on the CPA from Christina, this is not coming in the fall, so, if the, um, if the owners of the property are going to entertain half a, half a negotiation, I mean, that's, that's one thing, I don't know, I think you're the only one who's spoken, or maybe you and Michelle have spoken to them, but, you know, there's not a lot of insight into the negotiations with the, that have gone on.
There have been no negotiations since the June offer, that our lawyer communicated that they came back, and which we've all seen the response, the timing of the CPA, the CPA, the WCCP was in favor of 1.5, I have voted 7 to 2, contingent on the select board support, which a majority of the select board pulled to support, so then that 7 to 2 vote in favor of open space was nullified. If the CPA, if the WCCP went back to it, do I think the same support exists? I don't know, they've had some changes on their board, but if this passed at fall town meeting, and the other half was contingent on the WCCP, they could have a meeting in December, they could vote support, we could communicate that to the own, to the sellers, we could bring that up at spring town meeting, we could make that, we'd, you know, put out a purchase and sale on a closure dependent on WCCP approval in May.
I really don't like that, I think that the WCCP process is established, and the idea is it goes to the WCCP, and then it goes to town meeting, and reverting that right there is a subversion.
This doesn't revert it.
It does, you're saying town meeting gets to say some, then force an idea upon the CCP, that takes away the CCP's, like, position in this process, and I think we need to look at the fact that it's not just our negotiations, it's the seller's negotiations, they've been trying to sell this property and have something happen on it for close to 20 years, if not more, and we've heard the residents say how everything's been shot down, Mike just said that nothing's going to happen, maybe for a year, we can put together a much better plan, one that is more fiscally responsible for this town, that guarantees the conservation that the neighborhood deserves, that's going to come from support from the state, that's going to come from other grants and opportunities, that's not going to come directly from our own taxpayers to the sum of $3 million, and that's, there's no fear, there's no risk, we had all the opportunity to have this exclusive negotiation, and they never answered us, they just said no, they never gave us a number.
Yes, they did.
When did they give us a number?
In our packet from June, they did.
It's a higher number.
They gave us a number, they gave us a November dead, you know, drop dead date, they said fall town meeting.
No one's going to buy this property, we have an assessment saying it's not feasible to develop for anything more than a single-family lot, I don't think it's going anywhere between now and spring town meeting, I think that we need to commit ourselves to doing a much better job communicating with the neighborhood, finding better support from state aid, finding better support from other grants and opportunities, so that we can make this happen, but in a way that also protects not just our forests and, and nature, but also our pocketbooks, and there's no reason we can't do that, because we definitely have a motivated population sitting right here that will help us, so why don't we activate them and do something better for the town than just throwing $3 million at a property owner who's been trying to sell an albatross of a property for over 20 years?
So I'll just note that if we were to use CPA funds, those are still taxpayer dollars. Go ahead, Pars.
Can I have your, so, actually, can I first ask our maestro a question, are you in favor of conserving this land? Period, as a public policy priority?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think I've heard all five members of this board say that they are committed to, to conserving this land as a public policy priority, which is, which is good, right, I think we're all, we're all there on that, and while I appreciate, you know, the, the And while I appreciate, you know, the tone of this discussion is maybe a little elevated, I think there's probably more agreement than it may seem. Just it's really a question of timing, and it's a question of approach, at least for me. So I'm going to read some notes. I've jotted down. So I do agree, we need to have sort of a clear rationale that's kind of in public for long enough. I appreciate your point, Michelle, that in late September, the housing was removed. That is what the CCP approved, actually, was inclusive of the housing scope. So that 7 to 2 included the housing scope. And so I do think that as purely a conservation scope, and you can go back and watch a Select Board meeting at this table where I laid out how I would divvy up the purchase price between housing, recreation, and conservation, it's primarily now, I think, to use Tracy's term, a passive recreation with some conservation, no housing. So I think we just need to have that rationale sort of clear in the public mind longer. The price... My concern... There's... I hear Bill's point that we had a lower price earlier. The price has grown in terms of what's in the article. That price has not been accepted, to the point you just made, Michelle. The sellers came back with a price over the summer that is actually still quite a bit higher than the price we have here.
Correct.
And so what we don't have is a, in writing, accepted offer from them for any number that we would contemplate actually bringing to town meeting. I mean, they had put that in a number, but it's a number that's not something we're willing to bring. At least, I don't think anybody on this board has suggested we bring that. And I would say, you know, Mr. Colette mentioned the idea of private fundraising, and I forgot it was, but another individual mentioned the state, maybe it was actually Tracy, the state, you know, potentially having some more resources with sort of the bond bill. And so when I kind of look at the totality of this, I think we all agree on the core mission. And I think the mission's been clarified over the course of the four or five months I've been, you know, part of this, in terms of where it was in June versus where it was in September and where it sits today. I think we have more price discovery, but we still don't have a sort of a number we can all agree on. We haven't sort of availed ourselves of state and potentially local resources. And then I think ultimately where I conclude that, like, is it our number, the $3 million here, even the right number? Is the core issue... I had raised two issues. One is, is there a group of people who are willing to work on this asset? That's clearly yes. They're here, many of them, right now. Is this asset developable? And I appreciate Mike's view that it is. I still have a lot of questions about whether it truly is. I mean, we have, on Washington and Swanton Street, we've put the entire town's muscle behind it, and we got one bid in 2022. Waiving fees, given lots of considerations. This is up on a cliff with huge problems to developing it. Appreciate it as, in some theoretical sense, possible. But I do think that has to factor into our price offer. And I think going out with a number now, while it's something... They rejected the lower number. They came in with a very high number. This number's sort of in the middle. I don't necessarily see the justification for this number right now. So that's kind of where I am. I do think we all agree and want to work with the neighbors, though, to preserve this land. And let me just conclude. I hear you, Mike. I was not trying to mischaracterize the neighbors in saying that they were saying there's an imminent project. But there does seem to be a general undercurrent of urgency here in the comments, but also in the emails, that I don't see fully supported by the facts, given we haven't had a proposal in nine years, and even that proposal was rejected by Mass Housing for sort of pretty major deficiencies. So that's kind of what I was saying. I hear you. Nobody wrote me an email saying, "You guys are going to try to develop it." That's a fair point. I did not mean to say that.
Yeah, my point there is that if you live in the neighborhood, it always feels like there's going to be a development there, right? Because it's in your backyard, and when you moved there, you thought you were moving, you know, near some, you know, beautiful space, right? And so that's similar to what we heard with the Wright Lock Farm development on the West Side, right? Is preserving land and preserving a resource on the edge of town, right? Certainly, my record on affordable housing, I think, is clear. I think we want to put density for affordable housing in the center of town, as we've heard from residents, and that's what we've been working on. Here, you know, timing isn't always perfect, right? And we, when the town is involved in market decisions, we have to rely on information in front of us. And the timeline the developer put on us, maybe it's not real. I don't know. I'm not willing to take that risk for the neighborhood, because I have seen pressure over the years, certainly with 40B proposals and things like that. So I think the number is consistent with our appraised value. The initial offer that we made to them was based on what our negotiations with them, where we thought that they would be able to take a... If they donated part of the land, they would be able to take a capital gains tax credit, right?
And that number was lower.
So saying that number was lower is because it was for a reason that turned out to not be accurate. So then we turned into the appraisal, and we focused on that. For CPA money, we are required to use, have an appraisal for any sort of acquisition. The WCCP conversations, which were in public and were as a result of the Select Board's application, they... People had the same anxiety that the board has here, like, we just don't know. But in the end, they voted 7 to 2 to support a borrowing authorization, not $1.5 million, but a borrowing authorization, which is what we're recommending on the town side and on the CPA side, which amounts to about $90,000 of debt service a year. They were comfortable with that in order to protect the property, because they knew, and their conversation was, sometime it's going to be developed. And when I say a month, or a year, or a decade, I don't know. I don't have that visibility, and I don't think that we need to take that chance with the neighborhood and risk that.
And I agree. And this is my only point, which is... So in Wright Lock's case, Avalon Bay came in with a 40B, which created the exclusion, right, that the Select Board at the time, Select Board of Selectmen at the time, put out. Then they tried to sell a piece of it to Abbott, right? Abbott defaulted during the GFC. And then there was actually multiple proposals. And there was a recommendation from at least some people to sell a portion of it to Helios. Of course, ultimately, the Wright Lock Trust bought the land in 2015, as you remember. I think you were on the Select Board at the time. And so there was credible development pressure in those cases. And I really respect the view you have that you don't want to take what you perceive as risk. You know, I just look at this as, we haven't seen a proposal in nine years through one of the great sort of residential building booms in, you know, the last... Since World War II, it's one of the top three, I believe. 40Bs were very popular in late 20 teens. Obviously, development is much harder today than it was even four years ago. And in nine years, we haven't seen anyone come back. So it's not to say we should just let it go forever. It's just to say, can we not have the sort of pressure of the family on us bearing down so hard and give ourselves just, you know, one cycle of town meeting more to do some of the work? We have a much clearer proposal today. I think it's fair to say, you know, I think Concom, it sounds like, is willing to potentially sponsor it in the future. That's really what I'm after. I'm not suggesting we leave it for 20 years and sort of see what happens.
The distinction I'd make on Wright Lock Farm, you know, even though I think it's a good comparative here, is the town held a right of first refusal on that.
With 61A.
So when... We don't have that here, right? This is owned by, you know, a private family and a trust. And so some people have indicated that we should wait till a developer indicates they're going to develop.
That's not what I say.
No, no, I said some people. I didn't say you. I know that that's not... And I don't feel comfortable with that. We've been, as Anthea said, we've been negotiating with the owners and kicking the tires on it for a few years now. And we asked them, we said, "Can you wait until we see if the CPA passes? Because if the CPA doesn't pass, then we've got no legs here, and you guys need to move on," right? And so when it did pass, and we said, "Wait a little longer," they said, "We've been waiting for you guys for a while, and we want the town to buy it." But now the CPA passed, and we were intending to move forward with the $3 million request to the CPA committee. But with the pressure and really the amount, I think we felt that we didn't want the debt service to land solely on the WCCP and the CPA funds.
In its first year.
In its first year, right? They were still cobbling together policies and trying to recruit people and so... But even with that, and this was certainly their biggest ask, they still said, by vote of 7 to 2, hey, we want to do this. And so what they also said was...
But there was housing in that.
Yeah. And it was contingent upon...
But there was the forest circle housing in that.
But that's what they didn't like about it, right?
No, that's what they voted in favor of.
I understand, but that's what they suggested to us, that they would like the project better if it didn't have the housing.
That was communicated to me by the chair of the WCCP.
So that's why we moved.
And, Bill, it was contingent on us, because at the time, we put forward an application, so we were in favor of it.
Let's just back up to us putting forward an application. We voted not to put forward an application, and an application was put forward, which then we decided to vote to continue to support, so it didn't fall apart.
We voted to put forward an appraisal. We voted to put our name on the application.
We voted to...
Anthea's pointing out, the initial application was put in by Mike.
And then by a member to meet a deadline in June.
By the board after the fact, ahead of time, when we were asked as a board if we wanted to do it, we said no. And that may...
Well, I think they rejected our offer in June, and the deadline for the CPA was like two weeks later. We were trying to not have the window closed.
Yep. So and then, so I put forward the application and said, "I will bring it to the board for support." The board supported it then and ratified, so the actual application, then after our vote to support it, moved forward as a Select Board application to the Community Preservation Committee. So I get that people have concerns about it, but we can't be, like, recreating history. I think if we all agree that conserving this land is our priority, we are the Select Board. We are the people that need to do this. And just saying we're going to kick it down the road, I think, is unfair to the neighborhood. So and coming up with, you know, all these red herrings, and I think that... I'm not going to say that this proposal is perfect, but I don't want the, you know, perfect to be the enemy of the good here. And I think that's where we've landed on a lot of these projects. We just voted the LDA for the Swanton/Washington project to move forward. That had 22 amendments, 22 amendments. So that clearly wasn't perfect either. But it's...
That's not comparable to the SN voting, the 22.
No, no, my point is that sometimes we have to move forward when there's something in front of us.
There's nothing in front of us. The problem is...
There's nothing in front of us?
There's nothing... There's a request for a town meeting to authorize the Select Board to borrow money for the purchase of land. But...
And it's for you to vote to support it or not?
There's no agreement on...
We have to make an offer, and we can't make an offer unless we're authorized to make an offer to purchase. We can't go... I mean, I would not, as the chair, go out there and start talking to the families, "Oh, Select Board's good. We think one and a half here, one and a half there. What do you think?" I can't make an offer without the Select Board approving it. So we're asking for town meeting to give Select Board that authority. So I understand there was an offer, it was rejected, there was a counteroffer that we didn't accept. We decided to try to split the difference with the CPA route, and we have not gone back, because we're not authorized to go back.
So what would happen if we waited until Springtown meeting? I mean, I know that you had thought that.
I can give a perspective on that.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think that... I think it's helpful that the project criteria have settled out, right? That, to your point, the housing has been removed, right, from forest circle. I think therefore it is purely... It's purely sort of a conservation-driven initiative. So I would suggest we have Concom take it over.
Agreed.
I think the... Then the secondary piece is answering that core question of developability, which helps inform price. And a number of people in and around the Krebs' proposal, who are your colleagues, right, some of them at the time, and planning board members at the time, have, you know, said to me, "Look at the record." And I've read, you know, some of the documents that are available online. I understand that Brian Sekely's documents have been challenging to locate, but having planning, you know, department or the planning board, at the direction of the planning board, come in and really help us understand, how likely is any proposal of that magnitude to occur? Because I've heard the Krebs' proposal was just so technically deficient on every level that Mass Housing just sort of threw in the garbage. And so based on our perspective on how truly developable this is, and frankly, making that very clear to the family, that this may be developable, but it's very hard to do. I mean, it's hard to get... You know this better than me, Mike. Apartment buildings, we really want people to develop in the middle of town on two arterial roads to pencil at the moment, right? So, you know, using the fact of the developability to really push back on whatever price asks they have, not to just try to pull it down, but to get to a number that we think is equitable and that we think ultimately we can defend in front of town meeting. I appreciate your point on the appraisal and that number, you know, the number of $3 million that you have, and we do have an appraisal. But the appraisal does make assumptions around developability. And I think that's the part that I still have the gap on. And I assure you, it's not just a sense of, oh, I want somebody to pay less. It is having gone through and read as much as I can find, and I've asked for, you know, the town planner, predecessor of our current town planner, for his files, and I would love to find those, because that, to me, is the core question of if the 2016 proposal was thrown out by the state for being deficient across multiple areas, we never saw a second proposal again after that, then should we be paying this level of price? And if we can answer that question, combined with a more purely Concom-driven initiative, that, to me, would be the Springtown meeting.
So this is... I mean, I would say that we met a month or so ago with the Conservation Commission, who supported this unanimously. We... It was supported by the Conservation Commission Administrator as well, who provided that information, and she has everything you want to look at as far... Because we were also concerned, you know, about the health of the land as well, right? So whether or not it's good for us to acquire. And so we answered a lot of questions there, supported by the Conservation Commission. I imagine that we will put an amendment forward to the article, which would be that the purchase of the land would be owned by the Conservation Commission, right? So ultimately, that does put a conservation restriction on it, just by the fact that they are the owners of it. And as you said...
That would take a second vote at town meeting?
No.
No. Just an updated motion to get in town meeting.
It's an updated motion.
Oh, because we're just doing it now.
Just doing it now, yeah. And so that piece that you said that we would wait for the spring for, so it's really only the price piece that is the issue for you, and, you know, I don't know...
The justification of our price, but also they haven't even... They haven't accepted this number.
Well...
We're not authorized to offer.
Yeah, this is the problem.
Well, we authorized a different number.
Yeah, why can't?
But there was a number to... Bill brought me to this point. There was a number we did offer, and we were not authorized to offer that number either. We offered it, they obviously rejected it. They came back with a much larger number. This number is in the middle.
And we were trying to get there via the CPA and this to get to that number, and that was the CPA application, and this is this article. So we haven't gone back to them, because we don't have our half of the purchase price. We did have the CPA price, but that fell apart, and the Select Board was not in favor of going on the warrant collectively. That would have been our combined price. Those ducks had to line up, because we were offering money that we didn't have the source from, from borrowing or CPA.
But that was true with the first number, too, and we still offered it.
Correct. But that was going to be borrowing the first time. We didn't have the CPA in that first offer.
It could still be borrowing, though. I just don't like this idea...
No borrowing.
I don't like this idea of negotiating, you know, going to town meeting to get money before we even know what the number is that we're going to buy this thing for. And I won't be moved off that point.
Yeah, well, that's...
So that's where I am.
That's how municipal government works, unfortunately. I mean, that's the...
I disagree. I think that this could just be done so much better.
I know, you always say things like that, that everything could be done better, you know, without any sort of acknowledgement...
Please stop. We don't need to...
Of what that is, right? So that's why I was asking Parrish, what is, how do we hit the target of the things that he wants?
He just told you how to do it better.
No, I know, but I'm saying for you.
And he's giving you...
Also, because all you do is spend time arguing, and important facts don't get in there.
Yes. Parrish is merely arguing right now.
It's like, so here's the thing. There are multiple opportunities from DCR to look for reimbursement grants for the acquisition of property. The first search thing, you Google it, that is the first thing that comes up if you look for a DCR conservation acquisition. None of that has come into anything of what I got as a financial analysis today, which is just how we would pay for it. So there's all of these opportunities that there should be to go and look for ways that we can say, "Yes, it's a $3 million price, but we are eligible for this, this, and this, and here's how we would apply for it." Like, we're just, it's this, town meeting is not when you throw stuff at the wall and see what sticks. At this point, that's what we've been doing, and this whole thing has been throw it at the wall and see if it sticks. And at some point, we've said, like, "We're going to stop trying to do that because we don't have enough information." And telling us that we have enough information does not mean that we actually have the information. So if we're going to continue, if we want to continue this down the road and be thoughtful and intentional about it, and not say, "Let's spend $3 million of the town's money while we're going to come back for an override in the spring because our operating, we are operating at such thin margins that we can't continue to do so, and we've stretched the last override from three to four to five to six to seven years," like, at least be thoughtful and intentional about how we're spending money, and what are the opportunities for us to not go so deep into the hole for a critical conservation piece? I just think we get lazy.
Can we just be clear that nothing in this structure, so you brought up the override, right? The override debt service of $100,000 is not why we're going out to an override. We could afford debt service $100,000. So to say, "Oh, if we do this, we're releasing $3 million from our free cash," that is not the way this is structured. I just think it's not quite fair to say, "We need an override, and $100,000 will tip us." I mean, we're...
I'm not saying it's going to tip us, but we had a discussion last week that the increasing $2,000 for retiree Cola is going to...
1.8 million dollars. That's not $100,000 in debt service. It pushes our pension obligation up by over a million dollars.
I'm not saying that those are the same values, I'm saying that we're, when we talk about...
That 1.8 is actually comparable to the 3. That's a perfect comparison, because the annualized cost of the 1.8 was about $45,000 to $50,000. And then, so the 1.8 and 3 are a good comparison to each other. And to your point, Michelle, the annualized cost is 90-ish or 40-ish, right?
But I didn't reject the pension because of an override. I rejected the pension over a longer-term debt schedule. So there are different bases for the, and I don't suggest that an operating override is going to make or break on $100,000 in debt.
You're not saying it's a subsidy driver of the budget.
That's not, my point, I'm not equivocating them, I'm just saying, like, we, you're to say that, saying this debt service doesn't make a dent on needing an override is, like, the same as, I mean, I just, I'm not trying to equivocate those two projects, I'm just saying, we can't say that this impacts our long-term and this doesn't, just because we can carry it, we could carry long-term debt, too.
So are we just done for this tonight?
I just want to say to clarify something. We have reached out to DCR, we have reached out to the state. There is little opportunity for us to get funds to support this project from the state there, when we are pursuing even small amounts of money to offset some of the costs involved. So, you know, I think we can always find reasons not to do something, but I think that what we've heard as well, and actually, we were, back in 2016, there was an agency that reached out to us to purchase the land and said they would help us do that if it was going to be developed by Krebs. And I looked back in my email, found them, I called them, yeah, and I called them, and they said, "Sorry, we don't do that anymore. What we do is we invest in communities that are supporting the CPA." So they tried to get the CPA passed in communities because they felt that that local revenue source was more beneficial to preserving land than donating money directly. I think it's going to be, it's a hard thing for us to say to the abutters that you should fund, you know, some of this, you know, yourself. I mean, we have, we are generating revenue from taxpayers for the CPA for purposes that are exactly like this. So we've already taken money from taxpayers for it, so that can't be used for the general operating expenses, right? So I think it's, you know, we've provided a lot of information to the select board, we've provided a lot to the community, we've answered a lot of questions, to the degree that we can put amendment on there to make people feel more comfortable about it. I think that's helpful, but to, it's a little bit of a mixed message to say, "Everything is terrible, but maybe if we wait until the spring, it'll be better." You know, I...
I don't, I'm not sure if that's referring to something I said, but I certainly didn't characterize as everything is terrible. But I did say, "Let's wait until the spring." I did say that. And what I would say is, I mean, Mike, I appreciate you, you feel like you've provided a lot of information. I do think there is, there is not, no questions have been answered by any means. Many questions you've, I mean, we've, I go back to, the project scope is much clearer to me now than it was. The question of whether there's a group of people who are going to steward and support this asset, is one of the questions I posed to you.
Yep.
Let me answer it. The outstanding question is the developability question, that informs price, and ultimately, being able to justify and defend that price. And I appreciate your point on the residents, I wouldn't have said the residents should kick in, it was only that somebody mentioned that themselves. On the state front, though, you know, I have talked to some folks who think that if the governor's bond bill goes through, which is sort of transformational for open space acquisition, that there could be money there. I appreciate, you know, you don't think there's money there right now, Anthea, it seems like does, but on that one, I do think there's probably more there. But in any case, that's a smaller piece, and I think there's things you've answered, but that core question of, is it developable?
I just don't know if we're ever going to be able to answer that question, right? Because we won't know, right?
We're done.
We're done.
Okay.
All right, so the last thing we need to do is...
Is it, are we going to vote a position on that?
Well, there's other positions, too. We just need to get through the first night of town meeting.
We just had this discussion. So why don't we vote a position on Article 35? I'm going to make a motion for unfavorable action on Article 35.
Second.
An additional discussion? Okay, all those in favor, unfavorable action?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
I'll be opposed to that. Okay. What other ones would you like to mention, Bill? What other articles would you like to vote?
What do we have left?
Since it's 10 o'clock and you're tired.
Capital, is Article 6.
The reason I said that is because we got a huge influx of questions by email, and folks came here tonight, and it sort of forced us to have the deliberation, in my opinion, and maybe I'm wrong about that, but that was my intent.
We have to get through the first night of town meeting. And we should pick dates for November and December select board dates. So Article 4, Article 5, Rangel Ridge. They're coming to the public hearing. Do people need to wait for that?
I would prefer to listen to the public hearing, but I can vote if we need to.
Agree. I haven't heard anything about it.
Government regs, are people ready to vote that?
Can we vote Capital? We haven't voted Capital.
I got to get two people back to the table here. We could vote Capital when we're back.
We could do the consent agenda while we wait.
We already did the consent agenda.
Oh, our own consent agenda, and just get that out of the way. Motion to approve the consent agenda as posted for Monday, October 27, 25.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Capital Planning reports Article 6, we're not going to vote a position on that, we'll just give it. Article 8, Capital Projects, putting WCCP projects.
Move for favorable action on Article 8.
Second.
Presetta, Parrish is, Mike out there?
He is.
And can we get him back in?
Sure, I'm happy to try.
At least try.
I think he's on the phone.
I think he went down.
All right.
Want me to go look for him?
I don't want to vote Capital.
He was overdoing.
Sorry, what article are we on?
I don't want to vote any positions if we can get a quorum back.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
That's true, we get all of us, though. Bylaws, 3-1, no, let's do Chapter 1. Did people watch GovRegs? Or listen to GovRegs? Because we didn't have the video.
No, but I can say I worked directly on that for a couple hours with...
Ben, Karen?
But Bill, you're informed to vote, is what you're saying?
Meredith.
Meredith, thank you. Meredith Crowley.
Chapter 1, that's...
Article 16.
16.
Yep.
You worked on it?
I think it's good.
Okay.
Move that we vote favorable action on Article 16.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Chapter 2. This is town meeting. And Chapter 11 is litter. So Article 17 is amending Chapter 2, which is town meeting.
Yeah, that was pretty... 2 is fine by me.
Motion to vote favorable action on Article 2.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Article 18 is the litter bylaw.
It was in Article 2, Louis.
Article 2 or 10? I'm so sorry. Article 17, Chapter 2. Sorry, Patty. My article numbers are out to lunch today.
It's now on Article 18.
18, Chapter 11.
I worked on this with Karen Connolly. I'm very, I'm comfortable with it. She put a lot of work into it.
And this is all new?
It's mainly reordered and hasn't been passed.
Okay, I was like, it's just...
If it was redlined, it would be unreadable.
Yeah. I guess it's a penalty, not a fee, so having the dollar value in there, they were okay Motion for favorable action on Article 18.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Concom, I want to wait until Wednesday on their bylaw.
Where was Council going to come in on that one?
Yeah, Concom and Council, I believe, right?
So Council has written, and I can share it in advance of Wednesday, but basically that, I mean, Bill can summarize, but short of defining what a resource area is or the effects of mitigation, it's hard to know that basically, you know, almost any project could be subject to this bylaw. And Bill, I'm going to follow up with Jay to see, and see if Concom can give us, like, a map of resource areas or more. I ask, I need to follow up to see if it's actually enforceable and what metrics they would use to enforce. But what else, Bill, what more would you add to Jay's?
No, that's pretty much, it's a jurisdictional expansion, but it's hard to tell just how large of one it might be.
Yeah. So I will forward along what I have, and Concom will be there on Wednesday, and we could ask questions on Wednesday.
Thanks.
Of, you know, jurisdiction or measures or whatever it is. Okay, going to 21, Solar, Parrish.
So we...
People have what they need on that one to vote a position?
Yeah, so we are, you know, we, well, I shouldn't answer that question. Other people should say if they need what they have. Have what they need, sorry.
Yes.
Late.
Motion for favorable action on Article 21.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
If you're saying aye, I am hearing nothing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I said aye. I'm presenting it, so I better say aye.
Retirement board, I'd rather wait for Mike to come back, he might have an opinion on that one. Personnel board?
I thought Stacy sent us a pretty good set of numbers on that, too.
Yep.
We should probably, if he is going to come back, we should discuss it, I thought.
We could always take it up on Monday.
Yeah, I did not have a chance to read that this afternoon, but I saw it.
Okay.
I got it, so we talked about it on Monday.
It did largely confirm the numbers, Michelle, and I gave a pro to it, but...
Yeah, no, I saw it come in the end of the day, and I just didn't...
People, have they all read the personnel board report? Not that that's a night one thing, I'm sure it's not.
I'm comfortable with that. Do you want to vote on that? Or do you want to read it again?
There are specific motions on that, maybe we should...
Okay.
All right, GIS, for school committee? I don't, I'm kind of not ready on that one, but I don't know when I'm going to be ready on that one.
Are you not, in my mind, Michelle, are you not ready on it, or are you just skeptical of it itself? You don't have the force to answer that question?
Well, here's the thing, Bill and I had a call, and I'm not going to, like, say anything that's not, like, that I can't say, but it's still not clear exactly what the deliverable is. And I understand, I kind of get the general range of price and I get the utility, but what I'm not sure is if we're getting training, reports, analytics, and if it's a one-and-done or not. And I don't know, the problem being, I don't know if I'm going to know that before town meeting. So...
So I understood...
I think there's some details that I don't know if they're going to get to the table in terms of scope. Bill, I don't know if you think there's more coming?
No, it's funny you say that, because we didn't get that answer. We got all the reason, but we didn't get the thing.
The deliverable is...
Yeah.
It's this big and...
And I am sold on the reason, but you're right, we should know what the thing is.
Yeah, I just don't know, I mean, I may not know it Monday, and we may not know it before the floor of town meeting, so at some point, we'll have to vote, but let's see if anything is going to be put at table. I know School Committee is supposed to have a hearing on this, if it's, because it's written as kind of training and consulting and reports.
34.
It's 34. And we spent a good, almost an hour.
Yeah, I fully understand the reason.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's see if we can learn more between now and Monday. And then Rangel is coming in, and Capital Planning. Let's just punt on Capital and...
The way they describe it, and maybe we just need to have...
I think we just wait for them, Parrish. It'll be easier and better.
Are they going to come live?
They're not going to come live. They're going to have their own public hearing, I think, on Thursday.
Yeah. We can all watch that.
Okay, fine.
Instead of reading the tea leaves or parsing the...
Let me just say, and I'll tell the vice chair of the School Committee and the chair of the Planning Board this, I understand what they're trying to achieve. I think what you're asking, Michelle, is does this, does this actually achieve that goal?
Right.
Is the bigger question. My understanding is they're trying to understand what the students are, because they have all these capital decisions to make. I think you're asking, is this going to support that goal?
Or kind of how?
How is it going to support it?
I think it's more, how does it support that goal?
I assume, I, no, I'm asking a question. When you spoke with them, do they have a professional services...
Give me a second.
...firm who they're planning to engage?
They have an RFQ out.
Oh, they have RFQ, so they have a...
But I don't know if the RFQ is public.
Well...
I mean, it's out there, I don't know if it's been released. I don't know if it's been released. Bill, is it released yet? I don't think so.
They might be waiting for the, well, sorry, they might be waiting for the funding to release the RFQ, but-
The documents should be public, though.
No, but the RFQ will tell us what's in, what the deliverable is.
Yeah.
And I just don't remember.
And we sort of have it like screed share, but it's not in the background. And I don't know if it's going to be at the table. Maybe an executive summary at table would be great. Or maybe they'll say that at their hearing. But like, here's the schedule, and here's the output and, you know, output and then updates every two years. Like, that would be, right? GIS mapping for 2026, and then an update in 2028. Like, that would tell me something.
I think they'll need it again eventually. I don't know that it's in two years. But I think that's a question we can relay to them, that they can answer.
All right, let's just pause where we're at. And we'll see if we can agree on December dates and then just when we're done. November, December dates. So, November 17 or 24th. And then, December, Bill, you can't do the 15th? Did I hear that right? Or someone can't do the 15th? Steve, you get a voice in this, too? We're looking at one date in November, either the Monday, the 17th or Monday, the 24th. The 24th is Thanksgiving week. I don't know if people intend to be traveling as early as Monday evening. I thought we'd give ourselves a week off after town meeting, but we can, what do people want? And the reason, and we try to have to settle on Sunday is because we have to get Matt Abrams in for Water and Sewer in December. So, we need to give him some options so that we can fit him in. And I think we also have to maybe do another assessor vote in December as well. So, we need to let people know when we're coming together.
I think, can we do the 17th?
Of November?
The 1st and the 8th. And I say that because at some point, we need to, we're at some point in December, but we're probably doing town manager interviews.
So, you're thinking one of those weeks we need to dedicate to a different topic?
Well, we're going to have, no, we're going to need to, I might need to reschedule around it. The 15th is the first night of Hanukkah, I see on my calendar. Or maybe it's the first day.
I think it's the 14th.
It might be the 14th. My Apple can-
Patty did that research, actually. Sunday, the 14th.
No, it's funny, it says, I'm looking at, because it says Hanukkah first day. And I'm like, yes, so it must start the night before?
Yep.
Okay. But you can't do the 15th.
No.
You can't do the 15th, okay.
I don't think so.
All right, so let's do the 17th and definitely the 8th. And if you think we need the 1st, do you think we want to post for the 1st? I mean, I'm fine with that.
If we can skip it.
17th of November.
November, sorry.
Definitely the 8th of December.
And then, we may need to schedule another meeting for town manager interviews in December.
On the week of the 1st, maybe?
Maybe. We were meeting tomorrow at 6:00, so we don't have-
Okay.
I'll know more, hopefully, soon.
December 7, November 17th, let's do December 1. That gives us every other week. November 17, December 1, potentially December 8.
So, in December, you have to do the licenses?
Yes.
They can't be done December 1st, they have to be done. They're not, won't be ready.
We have to sign.
Until the 8th?
I am traveling the night of the 8th. I have a very late flight. I'm happy to try to come for some, but if we start early, I can also dismiss it.
Will we do State of the Town in December that we could-
We know that.
Do licenses?
Topic du jour.
Because all you do is-
All we do is signing them. All we do is sign them.
What, you're talking license signing?
Licenses.
Yes. Experience of signing, your name, 75.
But can't we, can we do that via DocuSign? Because during the pandemic, we did.
We can, we have, there is, that's what Jen did last year. So, we're just really approving it, all of them. And I'm not sure, the reason why she said the first Monday in December is not clear because then we have last-minute terminus. So, we want to get as clarified as many, so the 8th.
I think it's pretty likely we'll have a State of the Town.
Yeah.
Like, there's-
We should do that, you know, like the Friday.
Friday, the 5th or something.
Or if we need to do town manager interviews the week of the 15th. Well, no. We'll know with good time.
I'm good with that. So, you wanted to say right for now, the 17th of November, the 1st of December. And then-
Another town in December.
Something else in December. And then, there will be a State of the Town Friday in there as well, probably December 5th. So, for licenses, we could potentially do the 5th. We could do something else in December with a State of the Town if we needed to. And we may be meeting on the 22nd. Or we're going to maybe have one less person on the 8th or the 15th. So, can you get Matt maybe on on the 1st of December?
Okay.
If he's free? And Matt could do Zoom rates, I guess? Why not?
Make it shorter, ask less questions.
We got something, we got two dates. Let's adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Anyone?
All those in favor? Thank you.